Yeah, no, I wouldn't do that to you. You can do lots of learning.
Are you far away? Do I look funny?
No, I'm far away. I'm batting clean up your...
Oh, you're...
Yeah.
I mean, I thought it was important.
Yes, that's the tiger.
Repeat.
Thank you.
Let's see. Just off, thumbs up. Just, uh... Madam Chair?
Yes, are we ready?
Thumbs up.
Okay.
Give me... Hold tight for like 30 seconds.
Sure. Oh, we got one more coming.
We're good here.
Mr. Curtis in his seat. Here, there. How you doing?
Okay, and this is...
This is Beth. They're separated.
Okay, if you need my help, let me know. All right. Gentle, right?
Yeah, a little bit. My wife keeps trying to take my work from home chair away. And it's a big, like, the chair is like deep there. It's a big and tall chair. I smell it from my last bed. So it's like the headrest that's above my head and like deep and it's really padded. It looks so ugly. I'm like, it's...
It's 6:30, so...
It's got the groove, man.
Mr. Schmidt, am I ready? Am I good to go or you want me to hold on? Okay. Knowing that we have a full agenda, I am going to call the October 13th, 2025 meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission to order. If you would like to speak during public comment and have not yet signed up, there are forms that you can fill out and give them to one of the staff members here. We'll have, just to let everybody know, Mr. Shurkey said this for several of you, but there'll be several opportunities for public comment at different points in the meeting. I'll explain that a little bit more as we get to those. We'll start with the roll call. Commissioner Rombach.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner McCurtis.
Here.
Mr. Snyder, here. Mr. McConnell.
Here.
And Chair Shrewsbury is here. Commissioner Fowler let us know that he was not going to be able to be here tonight. So, thank you. Now we get to the first point in our agenda on public remarks. We have tonight a public hearing on one particular topic. And then we have, the public remarks are for any topics on the agenda. So if you are speaking for the public hearing, please make that clear on your form. And we ask that you, you can hold your comments to the public hearing. If you're speaking on anything else on the agenda, this is the opportunity to speak about it. So we ask that you fill out a form and let us know. And this is, okay, this one. And, okay, so I'm going to start public remarks with John Leoni. And if I mispronounce your name, please let me know. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please come to the podium. Leoni, thank you.
You gave separate speaking forums. At least we're some speaks for an individual.
Okay, so you don't want to go first? You'd like somebody to go before you?
If I could go last, because if you talk about that, when I do kind of wrap stuff, everything you want to say.
Okay, I can do that. But we want to keep moving. So you'll have three minutes. I will do Deborah Major first, followed by Joel Major. And you'll have three minutes. There'll be a light that'll count it down for you. Please give us your name and your address and then go ahead.
My name is Deborah Major. I reside at 4570 Seneca Drive for the last 25 years. I'm here to express my opposition to special use permit 25020. During the January 13th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting in which I was present, Mr. Fiedewa, the builder, made comments at the end of the meeting after residents noted that the three-story buildings he was proposing were not appropriate. He said, "You have my word that these will be no more than two stories." During the September 22nd meeting of this planning commission, Mr. Fiedewa presented to you two- and three-story structures in order to accommodate the retention ponds and lot size, he said. So apparently, his word meant nothing. This is an excuse, in my opinion, for him to build something resembling his original plan, and it was not even questioned by any commissioner. There seems to be no accountability for this builder. What he actually builds may be completely different than what he presents. And then what? This is the time for reviewing this board's past decisions, answering questions submitted by taxpaying residents, and discussions. You are here to make discussions, or excuse me, decisions that are appropriate for the entire township, not just the builder. Please find answers to the questions raised by the citizens before you make a ruling tonight. Please discuss with all of the commissioners tonight. There was one dissenting vote at the straw vote on September 22nd, and I'm more than disheartened to find that he is not here. And because on the September 22nd vote, when he dissented, no one asked him to elaborate. And that was very disturbing. I feel like he had something to say. He was the only one that voted no. And yet, nobody asked him one question, like, you know, tell me more about that. And that was very upsetting. So it might be enlightening to hear what he had to say, and now he's not here for this vote. So I hope you, you delay it. So please keep our township goals in the forefront of your mind. I reviewed them tonight on your website. Just to aim to preserve the character of existing single-family residential neighborhoods, of which I am a part. And number two, work towards increasing affordability of housing for both new and existing residents. This is your roadmap. If you don't follow this, the township that we know and love will be unrecognizable due to unaffordable rental units, traffic congestion on Dobie, on Dobie Road. That will spill out to all the arteries and three-story dwellings along Dobie Road. I encourage you to find out all of the facts again before you consider voting. Thank you.
Next up is Joel Major, followed by David Clock.
Hello, my name is Joel Major. I reside at two, excuse me, 4570 Seneca Drive in Oakmoss. Speaking in opposition of special use permit 25020 Fiedewa Holdings Dobie Road. This is the Planning Commission's last opportunity to approve or disapprove the zoning, rezoning, and site plan for this property. In your last meeting, this planning commission asked staff what happens next, and the response was, "It's pretty much administrative from here." So what is before this commission to approve? As was issued in the last meeting, the plan has changed yet again from promises made during rezoning. The developer has moved recycling bins, added parking, increased the size of the housing to three stories, created detention ponds, and unproven drainage remedies in conflict with earlier statements, all to accommodate the lot size. This property has been rezoned twice. Rezoning has been rejected twice, and then only zoned for lower density to accommodate the developer and the property. And now you have a site plan containing a separate driveway, which is not part of the rezoning or site plan approval. As we were all informed in the last meeting, that proposed driveway for the seller was part of the original buy-sell agreement. Is that what this commission is here to approve? A portion of a private sale? Or is it to approve or disapprove all the nonconformances, easements, and accommodations to a piece of land owned by a developer? If you approve this special use permit, what else will change after your approval? What other easements, standoff, property line, drainage will change under the guise of approval? Who holds the developer of any property accountable? If you vote to approve, then the answer to who holds the developer accountable appears to be pretty administrative. However, if you seek answers to your questions and clarity to your past zoning decisions, or if you even have some doubt regarding all the changes that have been made to this property by and for the developer, vote to not support SUP 25020 and hold the developer accountable to this planning commission's expectations. This is your last opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Clock, followed by Christina Clock.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Dave Clock, 4538 Seneca Drive. And I respectfully request that special use permit 25020 submitted by Fiedewa Holdings not be approved until the issues stated below are addressed and resolved. I mentioned a couple of these at the last meeting, but I wanted to point out again that the packet that was put together for you by the principal planner and staff has incorrect and misleading information while not presenting all the facts to the planning commission for you to render a decision on this special use permit. It says in the packet to you that the project is designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing and intended character of the general vicinity, and that such a use will not change the essential character of the same area, while referencing the 23 master plan. Nowhere in the comments from the principal planner and staff analysis to you is referring to the first goal of the 23 master plan, again, which is preserving the character of existing single-family residential neighborhoods, which is our neighborhood to the west. Even township treasurer, or I should say past treasurer, Phil Duchesne, mentioned at a township board meeting that the multiple family units would be a stark contrast to the residents to the west. Second point is the project will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the surrounding properties or the community. That was stated in your packet. That is false. At prior planning commission and township board meetings, I mentioned that the proposed site would result in lower property values along Seneca. There was a discussion at the last planning commission meeting about the economic welfare of the surrounding homes and community, but I'm not sure how the lowering of our property values would, wouldn't be considered detrimental to the surrounding area. As evident by the home currently for sale on Seneca, of the subject property, where multiple potential buyers are not, are not making offers because of the proposed site plan. Realtor comment again was to keep lowering the asking price. So that does have a negative economic effect on the surrounding properties. And again, my concern goes back to the water issues. Comments from your own township engineer in the packet. The engineer from the Meridian Township says the western half of the site will be filled, which will potentially impede backyard runoff from adjacent homes and potential ponding and potential additional flow into the neighbor's backyards. So what he's saying is our water won't flow off our property, but the water from this proposed site will flow onto our property. You know, a comment from your township engineer regarding soil erosion, which is confirming our concerns about the site plan, that soil and water are significant issues. I know comments in the past, you know, referencing that people in the township also want to use the land...
I'm sorry, so your time is up?
Is that the time?
Yep, thank you. Christina Clock, and then last will be John Leoni.
Christina Clock, speaking in opposition of SUP 25020. Since 2019, Mr. Fiedewa has been trying to develop the faith Lutheran parcel of land. He and a church liaison got the township to change the future land use map and master plan in 2023, unbeknownst to any surrounding property owners. This master plan update was implemented in a manner inconsistent with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and the equal protection clause of both the Michigan and U.S. constitutions. Specifically, notice procedures applied to affected properties was unequal, depriving landowners of a fair opportunity to participate. All zoning decisions arising from the 2023 master plan should be considered procedurally invalid. Why was it unequal? The township provided individualized notice to landowners affected by changes in the urban services boundary. No individual notice was provided to landowners affected by changes to the flum involving the Fiedewa Faith Lutheran property. Both changes were part of the same master plan update and considered during the same public process. Although the Michigan Planning Enabling Act does not require individualized notice for master plan amendments, once the township chose to provide such notice for one type of amendment, it was obligated to apply that procedure fairly and consistently. Case law clearly supports this principle. Township meeting records show that input from property owners surrounding the future land use map changes was actively discouraged, which reflected an intentional exclusion and a deliberate choice to limit participation in order to facilitate property development. There are several constitutional and statutory concerns with selective notification. The discretionary outreach by Meridian Township staff and planning commission triggered an obligation to provide notice fairly, equitably, and consistently, which it did not. Failure to notify adjacent property owners regarding flum amendments raises due process and equal protection concerns under Michigan and U.S. law. Providing notice to one set of affected property owners but not another similarly situated group is arbitrary, inequitable, and contrary to the principles of due process and equal protection. I urge the planning commission to take action to correct these deficiencies, deny the SUP, and have the master plan amendments reviewed by township legal counsel for compliance with procedural and constitutional requirements. Even apart from procedural concerns, this SUP should be denied due to the tangible risks to neighboring properties, including but not limited to flooding and water runoff, negative impacts to surrounding property values, and environmental concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is John Leoni.
Yes, I'm John Leoni, John Leoni at 4544 Dobie Road, and I'm opposing SUP 25020 for the following reasons. What's been delivered to the, the main reason is if this is approved, and I implore you, it triggers a very short deadline for filing a lawsuit, some pages of which, so we can be upfront about what will be happening, has been delivered to you this, this evening. And, but there's a quick history starting on page three, so you can see what the highlights are. But the quick highlights are in 2019, I think you all know this, this same rezoning was unanimously voted down by both the commission and the board. And then as recently as 2024, the summer of '24, was voted down again by the commission in a 4-1-1 vote, the last one being an admitted conflict of interest by Mr. Rombach, which apparently was resolved by his just proclamation that there's no more conflict. And that's the first I've ever heard of the person in the conflict proclaiming verbally that there's no more conflict. The number one issue for me, and that's, that will be head out in the complaint, which again is being finished off and with help with a larger firm to make sure it's all done right, is traffic. Now, something happened. So in 2019, it's turned down unanimously. 2024, it's turned down. So something happened after that, because in 2025, this board seems to ignore all the evidence that's been repeatedly brought before you and just is pushing this thing through. 487 new homes, the traffic of which has not hit the corner of the multiple corner there of Grand River, Dobie, and Marsh, seems to have been ignored by this board. Now, if there is a plan, because I don't think it's incompetence at all, if there is a plan that came in with some new leadership that we're going to push traffic so outrageously that will force widening of Dobie Road and other improvements, that is a very sad strategy if that in fact is afoot, because that means absolute mathematically inescapably, there's more accidents, injuries, and even deaths, if that is the strategy. Otherwise, it does seem incompetent to ignore the overwhelming traffic that will hit. As far as the conflict of interest, that is something that's just, again, hasn't been addressed. Also, I'll note that the entire public, I didn't get any warnings here that this is, am I at the end of my three minutes? No, great, great. The entire public, except for those who are financially gain, have been opposed to this with petitions. You've seen all the letters. There's just pages and pages. The only people for it are the people that sold the land, which happens to be a church, and the developer. So it's just astounding, this, this flip that happened in 2025. There's this complaint, is that 22 pages now? Because there's a long history, as you know. So this is being offered, as I implore you, because the, the deadline will come very soon, and there'll be no escaping. So please, let's all avoid the litigation and the delays and everything that will come with, if this has to be filed. So I implore you to please vote this down and consider reversing the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have anyone else who has given a form to speak during this time of public comment. There is a public hearing that will be coming later as they're...
They'll have to approve you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak now, or may I?
Yes.
If I may.
Please, yes.
As a chair, and I know it's highly unusual for the director to speak at this time, but I just want to, for the record, address the conflict of interest question that's been nefariously raised multiple times. We did take that to our attorney, as I shared with the, the planning commission, and I believe I shared at a meeting. And the township attorneys have reviewed everything and determined that nothing untoward had happened. And Commissioner Rombach, airing on the side of caution, brought it up, but there, there was not a conflict of interest that needed to be addressed. And so that, that issue was reviewed, has been resolved, and we have a legal opinion to that nature.
Thank you. And, and just to further add to the record, Commissioner Rombach mentioned it our last discussion, because the employment that led to the potential conflict that wasn't a conflict is now no longer in place. So it's, we're even further beyond that. So thank you for helping clarify that. And we, just for the record, we don't typically respond to public comment directly during the meeting, but, but I didn't, I appreciate you sharing that, so that Commissioner Rombach's... I'm sorry, we don't engage in conversation with people in the audience. We, we have time. Sir, you're out of order, sir. Please don't, thank you. We, we have a lot of people here, and I want to make sure that we get through all of the important things that we need to hear. Next on our agenda, if there is no more public comment during this portion of the meeting, is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda of the October 13th meeting with one proposed change to swap items seven and eight, so that we can get through the unfinished business before lengthy public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner McConnell and supported by Commissioner Snyder. Any other comments before we vote on approval of the agenda as proposed to be amended? Okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The minute, the agenda is approved with that switch of items seven and eight. Now we are to approval of minutes of the September 22nd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Minutes of the September 22nd meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner McCurtis, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Any comments or corrections to the minutes?
They're getting briefer, but they're still right on.
Yes, I appreciate that. I know it's hard for us. All right, all in favor of approval of minutes of September 22nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we are down to communications. I know we have a notice of the Williamson Township Master Plan.
Correct.
With the link, is there anything we should know? I saw that their deadline is November, so we have another meeting before then. Is it appropriate to just ask our folks to look and if they have concerns, bring them to the next meeting?
Take a look at that, and then if you have any concerns, you can email me. We can bring it up as a discussion item at the next, at your next meeting. If you want to compile things together into a single memo, then we can deal with it. And I'll, as we've done in the past, we've, we've written the memo together with comments, and then the secretary actually signs that and sends that as a communication from the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. So you all have your homework? Thank you. And then we are down to communications. I know there was a large group of communications in the packet, and it looks like we have received some more since then that will go in our next, like, you know, meeting minutes for this?
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll put those in the minutes.
Thank you. I hope got a chance to read those. And now we are at the new item 7A unfinished business, special use permit number 25020 for Fiedewa on Dobie Road. And I did have a question for you. You may get to this, but I didn't see a draft resolution.
You did not?
In the packets. No. Oh, it wasn't showing up on my...
It is the second...
250. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I totally skipped by that. I was, I'm sorry, thank you. There's a lot of pages still. Well, I'm on 251. I somehow did not show up, and maybe it took a while to load. Thank you, so disregard, thank you.
If you need me to pull it up, let me know.
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
Special use number 25020 Fiedewa Holdings, construct multifamily development over 25,000 square feet at 4601 Dobie Road. The public hearing was two weeks ago. I saw the applicant come in, so he can answer questions. I can answer additional questions. Staff has no further comment. I will remind you that you are, you are, you asked for a resolution to approve. That is not a resolution to approve the SUP. That is a resolution to recommend approval of the SUP. Everything's getting forwarded to the township board. Because of the nature of this SUP being at over 25,000 square feet, the board has the final approval or denial authority.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone before, or would someone like to move the resolution?
Mr. Shurkey, I have a question. For the, for the...
For the, for the, this process, we don't typically see a full site plan-
That is correct.
-for an SUP, correct?
That is correct. They haven't done the full engineering yet on the site. They've given some preliminary numbers that they've come up with, that came up at the planning, at the public hearing a couple of weeks ago. But, yeah, that is correct.
So would you say that what they have submitted is more work on the front end than is typical?
Well, no, an SUP is supposed to come with some kind of idea, right? You got to know what they're doing. And I will say this, because of what they've submitted upfront, anything that deviates on a submitted site plan is going to, you know, if it devi, if they start showing extra units, if they start showing, you know, tearing down the natural area, anything on that plan that does not conform to the concept that they've submitted to you, that will trigger an amendment and we'll kick it back.
So, just a couple more questions. So my understanding, though, is that the setback between the homes to the west and where the buildings start has been expanded.
That is correct.
Correct, beyond what we typically require.
That is correct. That was one of the conditions of the rezoning.
Right. And then, I think I'm remembering this correctly, but the part of what the plan is proposing will, is potentially will shift water away from, in some ways-
Grading isn't shown at this point. They haven't got to that level of detail. However, they are putting two large detention areas on the front of the property toward Dobie Road. By their calculations, and again, the Inglewood County Drain Commission will review this during site plan approval. By their calculations, they're designed to hold 24,000 cubic feet of water in a 19,000 cubic feet, 100-year storm.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer, I'm just going off the top of my head, but those, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That is how they're designing it, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Casey, you first.
Yes, I understand that you're going to have those detention pools or wastewater areas, because I remember talking about it last time.
Right.
One of the residents brought up, and even last time too, about all the water coming to the backyard. That seems to be like a recurring issue where they bring that, where residents bring that part up. What's new, I guess it isn't new because it's in the packet, but that the township's engineer talked about water going back there.
I-
Explain that to her.
I don't know why, I don't know why that's, that is interpreted like that. The plan shows that as being a natural untouched area, and if you go back there right now, it's not filled. Any attempt to fill that would constitute a major change and would come back here. I'll say that straight up. Like, I've been back in those woods, I picked the burrs off my shoes, like, it's not filled, it's not planned to be filled.
Right, and I just, I bring it up because I wanted that clarification.
Yeah.
So everyone can have a good understanding, because it was brought up that it was a township engineer that-
That would change the drainage of the entire area, and the Drain Commission's office would comment.
Just for clarity, it's been said a lot here, but the Drain Commission's review includes assurance that any runoff from that property is retained on the property and would not, isn't that part of what's required for Drain Commissioner approval?
Generally, yes. I don't want to speak for them, but yes. There, now there is a, if you recall, there is a, an outlet, if those detention areas were to fill to a certain point, there is an outlet that goes to a drain to the northwest. There's an easement recorded on the Faith Lutheran property for that to occur.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
I move to approve, move to adopt the resolution to recommend approval of SUP number 25020 to construct a multiple family development of over 25,000 square feet at 4601 Dobie Road, subject to the conditions found in the resolution to approve for the following reasons. Would you like me to state those?
Sure.
The proposed multi-family, multiple family development conforms to the Township Master Plan and the Future Land Use Map. The proposed multi-family, multiple family development conforms to the review criteria found in section 86-126 in the zoning ordinance. My phone goes to sleep, turns on its slide. The proposed multiple family development conforms to the review criteria found in section 86-658 in the zoning ordinance. And finally, the proposed multiple family development conforms to the conditions of rezoning number 25001.
Second.
Thank you. So let's move by Commissioner McConnell and seconded by Commissioner Brooks. Is there any further discussion on the resolution?
We had some discussion in our prior, we had a fair amount of discussion in our prior considerations of this about compatibility and with surrounding land uses, which is one of the criteria that we are required to consider. And I've been making the comment that that's a really tough challenge when you're at the edge of a zone. If I'm trying to do something that's totally out of character in the middle of a zone, it's going to be obvious, but when I'm on the edge of a zone, it's less obvious. So I took the time to look at the construction north, development north of this subject property at 1746 Chief Oakhamus Circle, which goes in and turns right, and those are townhomes with two stories over garages. Those are three-story buildings. And when I turn around and look across Dobie Road at the Arrow Tree Apartments, they, some of them are split-level, so two and a half stories. So comparing what might be built on the site to a single-family, single-story residence, it's totally incompatible looking up the road or across the road. It doesn't look incompatible. So I just wanted to add that as the lens that I'm seeing that compatibility issue through.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to comment now? I will call for a vote. This is a roll call vote. Commissioner Rombach?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So let's move this to the Township Board, they'll have a process that will be publicly noticed in the same way that our meetings have been publicly noticed.
No.
No, I mean, not two people, but there, it'll be in their packets, no?
Yeah, it will be in the board packet. I'd have to get back to you on specifics of how the board handles their applications. I don't staff the board.
Okay, sorry, I don't want to state something that's incorrect, so thank you for correcting me. All right, thank you. Next up is item 7B, SUP number 25021 for St. Martha Parish.
Yep, to construct an 11,000-square-foot addition to an existing church at 1100 Grand at Grand River Avenue, that is St. Martha Parish. You buy your straw poll, you indicated that you favored this SUP as well, same deal, this will go to the Township Board for final approval, so you are making a recommendation on this because it is a 25,000-square-foot SUP. I can answer questions, otherwise you have a resolution.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions, or would someone like to move the resolution?
I'd like to move to adopt the resolution to recommend approving special use permit 25021 to allow the construction of an 11,000-square-foot addition to an existing church building at 1100 Grand River Avenue, subject to the conditions found in the resolution to approve for the following reasons. The proposed classroom building with the Township Master Plan and the future land use map, the proposed classroom building conforms to the review criteria found in section 86-126 in the zoning ordinance. The applicant has agreed to comply with the conditions in the resolution to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to support the resolution for special use permit number 25021. Any further discussion, any discussion on this? Okay, I will call for the vote then. Commissioner Rombach?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So that motion is-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are at our public hearing for application number 25022, Continental Properties I Central Park Drive proposal. We do have a number of people here for public comment, so we are going to be strict about our three-minute time limit. I'll give a name, and then I'll say who's on deck. And when you come to, actually, when you come to the, do we do presentation first, or do we do public comment? And, I'm sorry, we usually start with you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Let me just back up for a minute.
That's all right.
Go ahead, take it away.
Oh, no worries.
Thank you, Mr. Schrick. Director Smith?
Try to kick you off on the right foot, and so as a general rule, start with the worst first, that's me, and then the development group will provide their position, and then you open up to the public for public comment. And as mentioned, three minutes each for the public. And so, staff, just by way of background, as everyone's aware, as we presented at the last meeting, this is a unique situation, right? This is not a traditional rezoning request, traditional special use permit request. This is a request to amend an existing settlement agreement that township is party to. Original lawsuit was filed in 1989. We originally settled it in 91. There was an amendment, oh, let's see here, I'll go through all of them real quick. We originally settled, the original order was in 92, we settled in 92. There was an amendment in 96, there was a stipulated order in 96 changing something. There was an amendment, a stip in '01, and a judgment amendment in '02. And in '03, in December, the IDs approached the township to change the zoning on the portion of property essentially located right here in this sort of weird crescent shape adjacent to what is now Central Park Estates. Central Park Estates didn't exist at the time and wasn't actually authorized yet, and so as part of that settlement agreement, the board required that Central Park Estates be, start construction prior to the agreement being put into place. And so that agreement at the time eliminated the office zoning that was right here, and I will show you on a map. I apologize, I'm running two different screens with two different computers, so that is messing with my brain. So this PO that you see in sort of the middle of the screen was eliminated, that was changed to RD, which is multifamily, up to eight units to the acre, and the CS zoning that you see dead in the middle of the screen still exists. And so that brings us to today. That's the current state of things. The middle portion adjacent to Central Park Estates is zoned office, the front portion along Central Park Drive is zoned community service. We've actually repealed that, but there's a further stipulated order in the lawsuit that says we can't actually get rid of it yet. We have a copy of it in our office that we maintain specifically for this property, because it's the last property that is zoned that way. And so what is in front of you this evening is a request to change that '04 approval to modify the zoning permitted on the site. So right now, as you can see, RD zoning, CS, CS up here. And so what would happen is the entire area would be rezoned to the next highest density multifamily residential, which would be RC. And I'm going to circle back now to my original comment about, this is sort of like a conditional rezoning, because essentially what's happening here is they have proposed to limit the development on the site to no more than 10 dwelling units to the acre, as you would do in a conditional rezoning. There are also several other conditions in the current set of plans, notably the additional setback from the neighboring development. Under the, under any, under the existing zoning, under any multifamily zoning, you would be able to build buildings within 50 feet of the surrounding residential properties. In this case, they are proposing an increased setback for further buffering and to leave as natural space. And so normally, this is the part where I would tell you that you really can't ask anything or change anything as part of a conditional rezoning, but I will reiterate this, the only time you'll hear this from me, now is the time, if you have suggestions, to give them to the board. And so what we will do is, there will be a great amount of discussion from the public tonight, great amount of discussion. I'm sure the Planning Commission has a bunch of questions, and so what I'm asking the Planning Commission to do this evening is to get all of your questions out for us, and staff will take them down and respond in writing at the next meeting. We would prefer to do it that way, that way we have the most correct information for you, given the heightened state of litigation surrounding this property. And so just to reiterate, the question in front of you this evening is about a land use change for three parcels, the area north of Belvedere, south of Times Square, the area between Belvedere and Columbus, and this area to the south of Columbus. They would change from the current designation of RD and CS to RC. The development would be limited to no more than 312 dwelling units. The buildings between Belvedere and Columbus would be limited to two stories. The access point, the full-time access points would only be on Central Park Drive and Times Square, to limit traffic potentially getting into the neighborhood. There'd be a minimum of 100 feet setback from Central Park Estates, whereas only 45 or 50 feet is required, depending on the zoning district. And there will be a couple of changes that the applicant is seeking as a result of that modification of the open spaces that were set aside, since obviously the wetlands have changed over the years. The, an allowance to allow 20 additional feet in our maximum building length. They are proposing building articulation, so it's not a straight line, but it would have 220-foot-long buildings. And an idea that we've actually tossed around internally, the idea of banking wetland area, wetland setback area, so that certain areas where grading needs to happen in the setback, set aside other areas where it would not be touched. And so essentially with a net, no net loss of buffer on the site. And so that's essentially the request you have in front of you this evening. It would be all multifamily, there'd be no commercial left. The, I will briefly go through a couple of other things here, and I would like to turn it over to the applicant and the public, because no one needs to hear from me anymore. The future land use map is not a great tool in this case. It's one of the few cases, I will tell you that, because since the '04, since the '04 amendment at least, but even prior to that, the future land use map has not been updated for anything on this site. It essentially refers back to the consent judgment. So no changes have been made. Future land use map calls for all commercial uses on the site, all the way back to Central Park Estates. And so that is not a great tool here, just simply because typically planners tend to shy away from changing things associated with settlement agreements. We would never recommend that, and in this case, we didn't. We talked about the existing zoning. I would like to briefly talk about traffic, because I'm sure that you're going to hear about traffic. The traffic assessment that's required compares, and this is the case with this project or the Dobie Road project, does not compare the existing to the proposed. It compares the zoning currently in place, and what could be built under that, with the zoning requested, and what could be built under that. So this case, we know exactly what could be built under the proposed, is 312 dwelling units. Under the existing, the estimated estimation is 99 dwelling units and 118,000 square feet of commercial. I would say it's probably a little high on the commercial side, but we haven't laid it out, right? It's trying to provide a worst-case scenario. Even if you cut that in half, the amount of traffic under the theoretical current zoning is substantially higher than under the proposed zoning, because commercial zoning drives far more traffic than most other uses. And so from a traffic perspective, this would certainly reduce the potential impacts for future development. Based on the study, all of the intersections studied will still operate as a level C or above. Central Park Estate, Central Park Drive is a collector road intended to bring traffic from the surrounding areas onto it to get you out to Marsh and Grand River Avenue, that's why it was built. Again, modeling, they did model both two points of access and four points of access for purposes of showing that. Also, we kind of assumed that road department was going to request it, and so that was something we recommended as well. Two points of access will not change the level of service in a tangible way, and so obviously, that is the preferred alternative here, because it does not put curb cuts onto, full-time curb cuts onto Belvedere or Columbus. Utilities are available at the site, that's of no concern. I will also, lastly, I'll point out, you know, there has been a lot of conversation in your packet this evening for the communications with respect to the school district. We did meet with the school district and had a conversation with them. As is the case with nearly every project, they are happy to see any new student that comes to Oakhamus Public Schools, and they are planning on having them if this project comes to fruition. The school district did not submit any comments, nor would we expect them to. They don't tend to get involved in our discussions, and we don't tend to get involved in their discussions, but they are excited to see any new students come to the best schools in the state. As I mentioned, we would hope that everyone gets their comments and questions out now, so the staff can then respond to them at the next meeting. But hopefully, we can focus on the land use question, because that is what the board has asked the Planning Commission to weigh in on here, the proposed land use for the site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, again for that. I'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the public- I'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing. Do you have questions for staff now?
Yeah, just one quickly.
Okay, can we start our list of questions for you now? Now, as a reminder, though, they've asked us to aggregate the questions and give them some time to answer, so you may not get a response from staff tonight, but you can start putting them forward if you'd like to. Commissioner McCutcheon.
I think it's a simple question, but, you know, when we talked about, I believe, the same development, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago, they had the, wasn't there, this is the one that's right across from Coles, right?
Correct.
And there was an issue with the drive-up, and two different property owners owning that kind of, access or something to that, to that nature. My question is, is that something that they are going to work out? Because I see a big conflict. I see a big conflict brewing if that doesn't happen. So has that been discussed?
Staff is very confident in saying, I can respond to that, because we've looked into that one extensively. We were very confident in saying that was intended to be an emergency access only, and that is now very much going to be an issue with their title and between the lawyers and the neighboring properties lawyers.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner McConnell.
Quick clarification on the timeline. The latest date I heard in that timeline was 2019. Is it the case that no action has been taken since COVID on this judgment agreement?
I am not aware of anything that's happened in the last five years.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I have one question too. Since you said the land use, and that's what we're here to talk about, so could you just define what that is?
So, it, land use is what is actually proposed to be on the actual future use of the land. And in this case, how that sort of generally lays out, right? We could be more specific here, because this is a settlement agreement, right? And if we are going forward and saying, in theory, we would allow RD, but it has to have 130 feet of setback from the neighbor. That is an important piece to have when the planning commission makes their recommendation.
Thank you.
Chair wants to put one.
Sure.
Mr. Schmidt, I, just maybe not a land use question admittedly, but I'm mortally curious. Do the parties stipulate that the 1992 order finding that something was unconstitutional, is that considered still in place, or has that been, has that been mitigated by, by subsequent settlement agreements?
The court has retained jurisdiction, but obviously the settlement agreements do take precedent in this case.
Okay, so the parties are agreeing that whatever settlement goes in place, regardless of that 1992 order governance?
Correct.
Interesting.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, let's hear from the applicant to share with us. Please give us your name and the address. Thank you.
All right, um, excuse me. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brett Mazzetti. I'm here with Continental 975 Fund LLC to present the proposed settlement amendment request. Also with me is a colleague, Eric Hahn, and then our traffic engineer, if there are any questions for her, as well as representation from the ownership group, Mark Klaus is here with I'd Land Holdings, excuse me, LLC. And I'm going to start just briefly with an introduction to Continental Properties. So Continental is a privately-held developer, owner, and operator of multifamily communities. We have developed over 125 communities within 19 states, and we have a high track record of success, partially because we have a vertically-integrated team. So all disciplines are in-house, most notably our property management team. We are not developers who develop to sell, we develop to become a part of the communities that we develop in, and that is why we retain our properties long-term as a part of our portfolio strategy. To touch on that, we do consider ourselves a little bit of a local developer in terms of a Michigan presence. We have over 1,700 units that are either operational or in development within the state. And this proposal with Authentic's Okemos that would, you know, be the result of the potential settlement amendment, would really bridge the gap in our portfolio between Detroit, Grand Rapids, and Kalamazoo. And again, you know, we have never sold a property in Michigan, and we want to become a part of the community that is thriving here in Redian Township. Before I get into the details of the proposal, I'll start with just the land use request. Tim gave a good intro, but to just ground us, the subject property is located east of Coles and south of the Walmart that exists in the township. So the parcel is bisected by Belvedere Ave and Columbus Ave to create essentially three smaller parcels that total 30.68 acres. The parcel is owned, as I mentioned, by I'd Land Holdings LLC, who is a holding company that has a responsibility to either develop or sell this property, which is what they are seeking to do. And as we know, the parcel is currently governed by the 2004 settlement amendment or consent judgment that identifies the site for both commercial and residential land uses up to eight dwelling units per acre. To touch a little bit on the surrounding area zoning and land use, you'll see here the subject property outlined in red, and you'll notice to the north and to the west are existing commercial zonings, including the CS zone that exists today on portions of the site. And then to the east and south are varying residential uses at varying intensities. So you have single-family with the Central Park Estates, you have multifamily with the Central Park Apartments, you have senior living with the Willows at Okemos, and then you have the currently being constructed Grand Reserve just south of the senior living facility. And so I think it's worth mentioning that there is no commercial development whatsoever built on the east side of Central Park until you get all the way down to Central Park and Grand River Ave. And so, you know, we really see this site as an opportunity for a transitional residential use here, given the existing zonings and the existing land uses that surround the site. This graphic here is just to better articulate what the buy-right uses are today by the 2004 settlement amendment. The areas in blue are currently zoned commercial, CS, it's 18.3 acres, roughly 60% of the site. And those CS, or that CS zone currently has buy-right uses, again, similar to what exists out there today. So Walmart, for example, has a CS land use, or excuse me, a CS zone. But also buy-right land uses include taverns, nightclubs, retails, bank, retail generally, banks, offices, dancer, music studios, building supply stores, various things that are all covered under that community service zone. The area in green, 12.38 acres roughly, or 40% of the site, is currently zoned, that RD for multifamily residential up to eight dwelling units per acre. And that would include buildings as tall as 35 feet in height and setbacks at approximately 45 feet from the Central Park Estates lot line. With that said, you know, I am here today to request feedback on the settlement amendment, which would remove that commercial CS zoning and allow for multifamily uses across the entire site, to suit Continental's development proposal, which is approximately 10.5 units per acre, but we'll have to look at exact calculation methodology with some of the wetlands that exist out there. Switching gears here into our actual development proposal, our start with a little bit of neighborhood outreach that we've conducted. Continental did host a voluntary neighborhood meeting on August 20th at the Catal Okemos Public Library. We invited all residents within Central Park Estates to the east, as well as all other property owners within 300 feet. We did take a lot of great feedback from that meeting and have incorporated some of that in our proposal that's being presented today. So I just want to make the point that we have modified our access and increased our buffer from the east property line, the Central Park Estates property line, since that neighborhood That brings me to our land use proposal. We are proposing, obviously, a multifamily community at 312 units, which again, depending on your, your calculation methodology, is going to fall between 10.2 and 10.5 units per acre. This, this plan deliberately takes feedback from previous work on the property and engagement with the board, and cites all of the two-story buildings on that center parcel. So there are seven two-story buildings on the center parcel, reflecting 168 units approximately, and the three-story buildings on the northern parcel, which would be about 144 units. Additionally, we have, as I've expressed, increased our setback from the Central Park Estates lot line. We have about 95% wetland preservation on the site, and we're really, we also have all of the standard amenities of a multifamily community. So you've got your community clubhouse, a pool and pool deck, vehicular parking and access, pedestrian connections, courtyards, things of that nature. To get into some of our rationale for this request, we do see this as master plan compliant. Starting with goal one of the master plan, which is to strengthen residential neighborhoods by preventing incompatible uses. You know, the CS zoning designation on the east side of Central Park Drive does feel incongruent with the varying housing developments that exist on the east side. And so using this as a appropriate transition from that intense commercial with Coles, Furniture Store, and PetSmart, all of that commercial development to the west, here with a medium-density multifamily as you head east into the Central Park Estates, it feels like a suitable and reasonable transition. Second, this site has been, or is within the township's urban service boundary, so as Tim mentioned, all infrastructure is in place to support the use, and it has been slated for development since the 2004 settlement amendment did position it for development many years ago. And so it would be an appropriate way to actually develop this site with these new land use designations. Second, or in addition to, we would comply with the township's wetland preservation plan, and so we would have no net loss by mitigating any of our impacts with the township and with the state. And as Tim mentioned, the CS zoning is obsolete, so there is a need to provide new zoning or land use guidance on the, on the property. I know I keep reiterating this, but I just wanted to bring up this transitional land use one more time. While the aerial is not showing the Grand Reserve, which is occupied to a certain extent and still under construction to a certain extent, you know, this is really an appropriate place for additional residential housing on the east side of Central Park. To discuss the buffers and setbacks, you'll see here in the exhibit provided that the, and in this, in this exhibit, north is on the right side of the screen. The blue, the blue line here would represent the code-required 45-foot building setback. Knowing, you know, the sensitivity of, of the proposal, we brought to the neighborhood meeting our building setback at a 90-foot minimum, which would be twice the code requirement and twice what would be allowed buy-right today. With the comments that we received, we have increased that setback. We now have a 100-foot minimum setback that is 2.2 times the code requirement, and that is just to a portion of that building five there. You'll see areas of building four and building six that are 135 feet or greater from that lot line, which is three times the code requirement. When again, that blue line is indicative of what could be built up to 35 feet today. While 35 feet is the max height allowed by the settlement amendment, our two-story buildings here are very much in line with the existing, with the heights of the existing single-family homes. By the township's definition, the building height is right around, leave 27 feet. So again, it does not seek to max out the allowances and is, you know, attempting to provide a substantial buffer here. These section views try to illustrate that a little bit further, with the top section showing what that buy-right use would look like, and the bottom section showing the 100-foot building setback. It increased landscape vegetation, excuse me, increased preserved landscape vegetation, and just a significant more amount of distance from the actual home to our proposed building. Next, briefly talk on access. Tim, Tim provided some feedback here too as well. Just want to go over what we brought to the neighborhood meeting back in August, which was, to access the northern parcel, we will propose full movement from Times Square and from Belvedere. And to access the southern, or the middle parcel, we were proposing full movement from Central Park and from Columbus. While Central Park and Columbus are public roadways that are under the county's jurisdiction, and they are not private roads to serve Central Park Estates, we did take that feedback from the meeting and have proposed to restrict those access points on Columbus and Belvedere to be emergency-only in an effort to reduce any sort of traffic from both Columbus and Belvedere. This directs all traffic to our community, to both Times Square and Central Park Drive. We did study both alternatives with our traffic impact study, so that would be all four intersections being full movement, and then the second option with restricted access at Belvedere and Columbus. And what the traffic study found is that in both scenarios, all intersections and all, all movements continue to operate at acceptable levels of service. And so, you know, the, the long story short is that the report findings, which is available to all of you, is that Continental's proposal was, will result in less traffic than the existing consent judgment would allow. And so while we are requesting an increase in multifamily allowance, the total intensity of the site is far less than what the existing amendment allows for. Moving into wetlands, we had, we hired a consultant, Mark's Wetlands, to conduct a wetland delineation. They did that onsite during the growing season. That was submitted to the township's wetland consultant for verification, and what we found is that there are 5.94 jurisdictional wetlands onsite, and we are proposing an impact of .29 acres, or in other words, preserving 95.2% of the existing wetland features. We are limiting all of our impacts to strategic areas and to non-jurisdictional features. In addition to that, we will comply with the township's wetland mitigation plan, most likely by creating wetlands onsite at a 1.5 or 2:1 ratio, as well as any state of Michigan or Eagle requirements that require payment into a fund. Switching gears a little bit into our resident demographics, our Authentic's product really is a market-rate product, so we kind of will occasionally call it the missing middle housing. It's very attractive to young professionals, recent graduates, schoolteachers, police officers, firefighters, and then empty nesters. In Michigan today, we have a portfolio of six operational communities. We see an average of 1.8 unit, or people per unit in our communities, and that's what we would expect here. And our, our demographic breakup of our Michigan portfolio is also shown here. You'll see the, the largest demographic is those young professionals or recent college grads, from 18 to 34, with the second-largest bucket being, you know, 35 to 64. So you get middle-aged people who choose to rent, you get empty nesters, you have a variety of, of different people, mostly encompassing that 18 to 64 range. And then from an affordability- And then from an affordability perspective, there is an affordability component to our While, you know, we have a we have we have high-quality demographics with our average household income of our Authentic's portfolio in Michigan being about $97,800, we have projected rents that are well under the 100% AMI rent threshold. And so while most of our rents from our for our studios, two, three bedrooms, are substantially less than that 100% AMI threshold, they aren't quite hitting that 80% AMI, but they're they're nearing nearing that that threshold as well. And so, community-wide, our average rent is about $1,678, which again, is less than 100% AMI in the area, making this a attainable option for current and future residents of the township. With all of that said, just want to highlight some of these proposal benefits that I've covered. So, you know, we really see this as a new, high-quality, attainable housing choice. It will create jobs, both temporary and permanent. It will increase the tax revenue and will contribute our residents have a high spending power that will contribute to the township. We believe this is in a compatible character to the existing uses and is less intense than the by right uses that exist today on the site. And it also redirects commercial to more appropriate areas in the township. Master plan identifies numerous areas within the township that they're seeking mixed use and commercial that that would help redirect those users to, as well as some of the vacancies at the Meridian Mall and in the surrounding area. It is environmentally sensitive, given the high-quality features that exist on the site and the preservation of those features. And we are a local owner and operator with a lot of experience in Michigan that we believe will provide benefit to the community. And so, in summary, again, really see our request to amend the settlement to allow for multifamily to be an appropriate transition that is master plan compliant, sensitive to the existing uses in the neighborhood that exists out there today, has enhanced buffers and setbacks, does not have any adverse traffic impacts, is environmentally conscious, has an affordability component, will create jobs, and will increase the township's tax revenue on the site, resulting in a investment in the future of Meridian Township. With that said, I'm happy to take any questions at this time or later. Again, we also have representation from the landowner if there are any questions for Mark. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Mizetti right now? Anyone else that he's?
Commissioner McConnel. I'm hoping Commissioner McConnel will touch on traffic studies because I know he understands better than I do. But Mr. Mizetti, quick question. Did you review the public commentary submitted ahead of this meeting?
I did, yes.
A couple of comments around your EPIC ratings and your Better Business Bureau rating in there.
I don't recall seeing anything on the EPIC rating, and I actually don't know what that is, but I can speak to the Better Business Bureau rating if you'd like.
Okay.
So I guess let me start by saying the the BBB is not an industry standard when it comes to ranking of multifamily developers. As I mentioned, we've developed, you know, 45,000 units in 125 communities across 19 states. And so that doesn't really give a good representation of who we are. We kind of look to ratings at the community level. The BBB is not regulated in any way, and there's no oversight, and you have to pay an annual fee to be accredited. And so we just don't, we don't pay the BBB to become accredited. Because of that, we are sometimes unaware when there are unresolved comments with the BBB. So my understanding is that the BBB establishes a rating, a grade, based on your ability to respond to or resolve a comment within 10 days of receiving it. Because we don't get them directly often, we don't even know they exist, which sometimes results in a fluctuating grade. This was brought up at the neighborhood meeting, so we actually reached out to the BBB. They sent us, I believe it was seven comments, but I'd have to double-check that, that were unresolved. Again, normally, we go to the community level to get with our in-house property management team. They normally address things, they don't make it to the BBB. But we were able to resolve those comments. And so if you were to look now, today, despite not being accredited by the BBB, Continental does have an A rating. That was a result of us responding to any any outstanding comments that were out there.
Okay.
Thank you. One note for you, too. We'll appreciate you answering, and please feel free to answer questions if you have the answers, but we'd like to give you the same courtesy as staff. If there's something that is better addressed in a follow-up with staff, questions that you need to come back to, please answer as much as you can today. I think it's helpful, but but if there's something that you need to come back to us, please do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions right now?
Just a follow. It may be an Epi-Q rating, EPI capital Q metric rating.
I would have to look into that one.
Please do.
But I will do that. If I can also add, you know, we do rely on Google reviews, Yelp reviews. If you were to look at any of our communities here in Michigan, you would probably find a different result. So if you were to check out Authentic's Quincy Street, or Authentic's Kalamazoo, or other properties, you know, I just want to reiterate, we don't use the BBB as an industry benchmark, and I think very few people in the industry do.
I mean, I can tell you where I work. We respond to Better Business Bureau complaints without being a member, so.
Right. And that's what we did now that we, I guess they just slipped through the cracks or weren't seen by us in some way.
I'm off, sir.
Apparently, I'm supposed to ask about traffic. Did you say your traffic engineer is here?
I believe, yes, Julie is here.
Great. And this is going to be really easy because I don't have any questions about most of the study. What did, I'm sorry, did you want to introduce yourself?
I can. Julie Corle, Lisa Manabrink. I'm the Traffic Engineering Group Manager.
Thank you. Is it the case that the traffic analysis that you've done so far is solely addressing motor vehicle traffic?
We did a vehicle traffic analysis, yes. We did not do a multimodal trip generation analysis. For this particular property, we anticipate most of the vehicle, the trips generated by the site will be vehicle trips.
I've spoken in the past about this project as fitting my understanding of infill development. And for that to actually be the case, from a walkability standpoint, we'd have to understand how if someone wanted to patronize Kohl's from this new development and they weren't going to use a motor vehicle, how they would safely get there. And I'm wondering what, if any consideration you've so far given or might give to how folks might safely get to the businesses we hope they get to, both to the west and to the north. If I were in that new development and wanted to take my family to the Thai Princess Restaurant, I would hope I wouldn't have to get in my car to do that and that me and my family could get there safely, whether it was by foot, on bicycles, on electric scooters, on whatever it might be.
Sure, I think that's a very valid point. Wasn't something that was explicitly required as part of this evaluation, but I think we can certainly look at that to provide some recommendations for pedestrian and bicycle accommodations as part of this project.
Thank you. I hope that will be part of the discussions with the Road Department. They have, and the state has been installing more and more pedestrian Refuge Island applications. They don't work everywhere, and they don't always work perfectly, but there we also have pedestrian and bicycle-activated warning lights that help pedestrians find a break in the traffic. So the more that we can ensure that a project like this actually provides safe, non-motorized access to amenities, the more attractive it becomes.
Sure. And we've been working very closely with Ingham County Department of Roads this entire time. So certainly something that we can provide some potential mitigation measures and confirm with them if they would agree to it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner McConnel, did that satisfy your traffic question?
I'm trying to figure out how I want to phrase it because I understand the comparison point in the documents is zoning as compared to what it would be available under the settlement agreement, right? But rather than comparing that to, it just feels like a, the comparison doesn't seem spot-on because it's a zoning that doesn't exist, except for this area. It's like, what, what is the harm? Because I understand there's, and this is written, there's two sets of traffic studies, right? There's one that if there's a certain amount of trips, more trips generated, there's a step up, right?
So what we performed here was a traffic impact study, which evaluated the impact of this development at both the site driveways and off-site intersections. So that would be the the step up.
That's the elevated.
That's the elevated.
Okay.
I have a question about traffic.
Go ahead.
So so there's the two versus the four points of access that's talked about. Which one is better?
From a traffic impact standpoint, the level of service really wasn't any different, whether it was four points of access or two points of access. And that's really just because the adjacent roadway can accommodate the traffic volumes generated by this. So we really didn't see much measurable change in operations between the four or the two.
Have you ever put something in like this where you you only had the two, but then there was a restricted access point, and your residents complained about that?
Well, usually, the residents don't come back to me to complain about their access.
That's a fair point. But I'm saying, like, so you've got this access point that's closed, so then what, if I lived there, I'd be like, I actually don't want to go on a Central Park Drive because there's more traffic. I'd rather go to the main road and then turn on Central Park Drive rather than out of the neighborhood.
And we can utilize different means and methods for achieving emergency-only. It doesn't even need to necessarily look like an access point that a resident would see and then kind of complain about if that were to make sense. You know, you can do things like have a mountable curb with a certain paver that an emergency vehicle could utilize as secondary access that a resident wouldn't confuse as a potential access. But in general, I think our residents are, like any person, adaptable. And so when they move in, if that is not an available access point, I don't think they will ever expect that it becomes one.
Did you, maybe I missed this, did we, did we model this? And if we did, I'm sorry. This design without any access point on Central Park?
No, we we had assumed that, so the ones that circle in blue up there, those were assumed in both scenarios. So those were the two, the ones that we considered with and without were the ones that are in red.
I guess in my mind, if I'm thinking about curb cuts and and the Central Park Road is the the Collector Street, don't, wouldn't we want to, in theory, limit curb cuts to that?
I don't want to speak for you, but it's my understanding, I've got to jump in for a second, that this was changed because residents in your neighborhood meeting expressed concern about increased traffic on Belvedere and Columbus that go into the neighborhoods. And so that was one of the reasons for potentially limiting traffic on those streets.
For, from a life safety perspective, we understand from the fire department, we need two points of access to both parcels. So in all scenarios, there are two points of access. We lit, we restricted the ones on Belvedere and Columbus because of neighborhood feedback that they were not wanting to increase traffic on the public roads that serve Central Park Estates. We have never considered removing the access from Central Park. We believe the volumes can handle the increase in traffic. We've met with the roadway department, who did not have any concern with the access point as proposed.
I have a question, and this is getting a little bit outside of land use, but I see that you have what appears to be a swimming pool in one section. Is it your plan that these two sections of development are going to be considered as like one larger property and that residents of the northern area are going to also use amenities that are in the southern area? And if so, I think that speaks to Commissioner McConnel's question about sort of walkability between the two and how people will be able to traverse by foot or otherwise if they're not.
Sure. Yes, so the intent is for all residents to have access to all community amenities, regardless of where their building is. We are proposing additional public sidewalk. I know it's kind of hard to see here, but we're proposing it on the north side of Belvedere and on the south, or excuse me, on the north side of Columbus and on the south side of Belvedere. And that will help get residents from the north to the middle parcel by utilizing the public sidewalk network that exists in addition to the additional public improvement that we're proposing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have several more, but.
Do you want to wave your public comment that makes for more questions, either for staff or for the developer, if you'd like to? But you could answer, ask them now if you.
If it's okay, I'd like to.
Sure, please, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So in your presentation, you talked about your units per acre.
Yeah.
Is that, can you go back to that slide, please?
Yes, so.
I think it was 1.8 units per acre. Sorry, I'm. Right here. Yeah? Or no, 10. There was some slide where you compared, anyways, my question is, is the the units per acre that you're showing us, is that, oh, it's where you compared it to your other properties across the state of Michigan?
I see. So this was.
Yeah, this one. Sorry. So and here you talked about your your average residence per unit. And so I was curious, in comparing that to this complex, so are you comparing apples to apples here? Like, is this other units that are two-bedroom, and you're comparing those against Authentic's Oakhamus, that's also two-bedroom, or are these four-bedrooms and three-bedrooms and all mixed up?
So all of our properties have a mix between studio and three-bedrooms. This was the average. So within our Michigan portfolio of six communities, we have an average of 1.8 residents per unit. We compared that against our nationwide portfolio as well, which is very similar in number. So we believe that to be a good estimate for this proposal. So we're, it is an average based on all the units. We have a makeup in this proposal of 8% of the units being studios, that would be 27 units, 33% of the units being one-bedrooms, which would be 102 units, 50% of the units being two-bedrooms, which would be 156 units, and then 8% of the units being three-bedrooms, so 27 units. And we believe with that unit mix, the 1.8 comparison would still stand here.
Does the, does the parking, so, does the parking, is that based, determined based on that 1.8 number? Or is the parking based on?
The proposed parking?
Yeah.
The proposed parking is based on Meridian Township's ordinance, which requires a certain number of stalls per bedroom. So a studio has a requirement versus a three-bedroom that has a different parking requirement. So a studio has a requirement versus a three-bedroom that has a different parking requirement. And so we hit the code required parking based on our unit mix.
Are you going above that requirement at all, or are you staying at that minimum?
The requirement is, for our proposal today, about 1.82 stalls per unit, which is about, I think it's 569 stalls. We are right at that because we do believe that is actually more than what is required based on, again, our portfolio data. Our portfolio, we typically see a need for 1.75 stalls per unit. With the code requirement here being about 1.82, we're hitting the code, but we are not going above it.
I have a question on this picture, and it may just be a function of not having updated this map. It looks like there's some stuff up at the northeast side near Belvedere, like south of Belvedere, that isn't in some of the other drawings that, is that?
Is it in green in color?
The configuration where it says building number two, that just looks different than the other drawings.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. This isn't, this is an old, very old plan. I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
Let me not stick on that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brooks, did you have any other questions?
On your, yes, sorry, thank you. So you showed us your square foot. What's, my question is, what's your cost per square foot rental unit rate?
I would have to look at that. Eric, you might have it if you would like to provide that now.
Because you're showing us, you're showing us the, basically the rental cost, like how much does this cost?
Yep.
Per month? But that can be based on lots of different factors. And so I'm asking, is your cost per square foot actually different than that rate?
Sure. I'll go back to that, that slide.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Eric Hahn. So are you asking about the rental rate?
I may have used the wrong word. It's the average Authentics rent. So you've got 1,472 for the studio, and then the AMI rent is $1,600. So I'm asking, is, is the AMI rent, is that based on like the amount of square feet in the apartment?
The affordability metric is based on income, and that's designated by, by the statistical area. So that's 30% of 100% of area meeting incomes divided by 12.
Right, but for, for a studio apartment that is the same size as your, your studio apartments that you're renting?
There's no size categorization for the attainability, but we can provide.
Okay.
The per square foot rents, so there's a wide range.
Okay.
Depending on the size. The studio size is roughly 500 square feet, so they're in the $2, roughly $2 range, $1.90. There's a wide variety there.
I included the square footages here on this slide of our units. So you'll see the range for the studios through the three bedrooms, and we can provide that, that rent on the per square foot if you would like, or we can do the quick division here.
Okay, thank you.
So roughly for the studio rates in today's terms, not future terms when we trend rent for increases as, you know, up to the time when we would open down the road, the studio rents range from $2.09 to $2.22 per foot.
Okay, thank you.
Can I piggyback on Commissioner Brooks's question on this slide, please? I am curious as to why, in talking about this slide and affordability, there was mention of the missing middle, and I'm curious as to the conflating of the missing middle with a rent that is at 100% AMI rather than 80% AMI? If you could speak to that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So the, the standard affordability thresholds are typically at 60% AMI, 80% AMI, 100, 120, and that gives you your indication of where your rent is at in relation to the incomes of the area. What I was trying to say is that while we are below 100% AMI, we're not quite at the 80% AMI rent rate. And so I didn't try to, to create an average since it isn't kind of a standard that is used, but if you were to try to do that, you would see that some of our units are at 81, 83, 90% AMI, which would be theoretically much more affordable or attainable than other market rate apartments that might exist.
Well, if your units are going to average about 1.8 people per unit, then I don't know that that is accurate, that these rental prices could be under 80% AMI. Perhaps if you are averaging four, five, or six people per unit at these prices, then maybe they would be at 80% AMI or less, but at 1.8, that math doesn't compute.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric. So what we're using for the affordability is the Ingham County published rates. Those are, there's two different ways that they set the top of market restrictions or affordability restrictions. So it's number of people per household, but they also designate by class of unit. So that's efficiency through the three-bedroom. So for instance, what we're referencing there, and this is the published rate from April 1st of this year, the 100% of AMI top of rent is 1,765. One-bedrooms are 1,891. And what we're doing here, and that includes utilities, so you have to take the utility allowance and deduct that. So we're showing that based on the types of utilities we would provide that are tenant-paid. So we're, you know, deducting that range for this affordability check, more or less. But we can provide you the published schedules if that's helpful.
Sure. What utilities are included?
So the tenant pays for all utilities. What we use.
Oh, you're saying the number 1,765? Could you maybe explain that? I apologize.
Yes, so the affordability thresholds include all utilities. So every geography usually includes an annual allowance schedule for the same utilities, and we can provide that as well. So roughly, sorry, I'm looking for my spreadsheet on this. It depends on if you heat with gas or electric, there's different, different utility allowances. So we use that in order to income qualify if we were to restrict, which we don't plan to. We see this as the market rate for this part of the metro as compared to higher urban rates, if it's a high-rise or something like that. But to help explain the difference here, an efficiency unit, the utility allowance, as of this year's schedule for gas, heat, as we provide, we provide electric appliances and so on. You can pick and choose. So a studio utility allowance is $160, one-bedroom is $178, two-bedroom would be $243 based on what we provide, three-bedroom would be $328. So we're deducting that from the maximum to determine the actual rental rate because we, we expect our tenants to pay for their own utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for public comment?
Can we take a brief?
Okay, these people have been waiting a long time, so we, but we've been here for a long time, too. So let's do a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and, and we'll hear from everybody who's here to speak. Make sure they all get a chance to talk.
Yep.
Thank you.
I was so high that I was gonna die.
Yeah.
And that could happen all in one day.
Yeah, oh yeah, it did.
Yeah.
We're ready? Thank you. See, I'm getting all stricken. All right, we ready to reconvene? I'm gonna call us back to order at eight oh nine. Now I get to say the fun part about our three minutes of public comments. So I will hopefully not mangle anybody's name too much. Some of this writing is a little hard to read. So I apologize in advance if I don't pronounce your name correctly. Please help us for the record when you come to the table or come to the podium. You'll give us your name and your address. You'll have three minutes. There will be a timer that will beep when thirty seconds left.
It doesn't always.
It will hopefully beep. Watch the lights.
If we start going junk of Jackson, it's thirty seconds.
And as I said before, it is the board's practice not to respond to comments. So we will be listening and taking notes and hearing you. But we won't be answering questions now. Your comments, though, and the letters that we've received may generate additional questions that we'll have for staff. We'll be talking a little bit more after this. So first up, I have Prem Nalaganti. And then followed by Palet Grace.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Prem Nalaganti. I live in Central Park Estates, fifteen thirty-two Belvedere Avenue. So I'm glad that we are already discussing about the traffic issues there. So if you look at the roads around that area, so most of the roads are curvy. And if you look at the Central Park Drive, there are five roads that are hitting that road. And as of now, with the current population itself, like, there's a lot of traffic in and out. And there are regular accidents that happen on the Times Square and Central Park because there are a lot of blind spots. And also, like, the Belvedere Avenue and the Columbus Drive is also curvy. And we also have some blind spots there. So I'm worried about having these apartments built here with... I mean, the slide says that there are only five hundred and sixty-two people living there. But I doubt if you include children and pets and all that, it's going to be more than that, I guess. So having so many people living in that smaller area, my opinion is, like, I mean, it's going to congest the area and it might choke the people there. And also, like, the north and south, when they are trying to say that north and south, the Belvedere Avenue is trying to split that, north and south. And if the people have to cross the roads, they might just cross the roads on the open lands there. So that might also create a traffic issue there. So I would like to consider these points, mainly about the traffic. Already, we are seeing a lot of accidents there. So I'd like to consider my points. And my request is, like, already, we have the zoning as commercial and the residential. So the residential, if we can expand the Central Park Estates to cover that extra residential area, to have the single homes built there, that would be more beneficial. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Palet Grace, followed by Jay Shi.
Good evening. I'm Palet Grace from forty-eight twenty-four Nassau Street in Central Park Estates. Up till now, those of us in the community have been directing a lot of our concerns, very extensive information that we've gathered about what we believe about the development. And we have been funneling that to the board. So we're here to also make sure that you understand that we express our opposition, I express my opposition, to the development. And our collective voice has been very clear and consistent when we've sent messages to the board that we have significant concerns about the impact that this project will have on our community's character and safety in the future. Has been already discussed, to some great extent here, the traffic, safety, the increased density. And let's be clear, what the main concern is, is that they, the developer, is asking to increase density that currently stands at eight to ten point two. And that is where the concern is coming. And all the congestion, all the traffic, stuffing three hundred apartments into this small area and all the impact that that will have, that is what the concern is. It's the density level. And that was litigated years ago. We see no reason why you would want to change what was already litigated in the courts and stands today. Why increase the density when it was not asked for or considered in the past? "Our township is known for its sense of community and quality of life. And the scale and the design of the CPE will diminish property values and the overall appeal of the area. It will be simply too congested. You won't be able to find people who want to buy the homes in CPE, although you'll probably find a lot of people who want to find the inexpensive apartments that will be fronting us." "We have raised concerns about whether the proposed development aligns with the standards and expectations of Meridian Township. These are not high-end apartments. They are affordable apartments. And they will bring in many, many people that will impact the security and safety of the area, not only from the traffic perspective, but from the pedestrians walking the streets in the neighborhoods. And, believe me, as a resident there today, we already constantly see near-miss traffic accidents and lots of stuff going on, even from the increase from the Okemos Reserve that has just come on board. And we're seeing already so much impact from that traffic." So we're asking that you, as the officials of...
Thank you, that's your three minutes.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Sorry, our thirty-minute warning is not working. So you'll just have to watch the lights. Next up is, thirty seconds, sorry. Next up is Jay Shi, followed by Heng Hannah Nguyen.
Good evening, Jay Shi, fifteen seventy-two Maiden Lane. I'm here to oppose the proposed Central Park Drive project, particularly opposed to the rezoning request. First of all, I would like to invite you to put yourself in our shoes. Just imagine you're the residence of CPE. And your kids are just, like, running around in a safe neighborhood. But because of all the proposed change, rezoning, and also this project, you know, your quality life is no longer there and your kids are now safe in the neighborhood. So I wanted to begin by highlighting the irresponsible actions that occurred just last week. I think the Planning Commission may have already aware of this. So the developers and the landlord began cleaning the land and conducting soil sampling without official approval. This shows disregard for the township rules, policies, and the proper approval process. So all these actions are irresponsible, disrespectful, and a clear demonstration of greed. They are prioritizing their interests over the community while undermining the integrity of the Planning Commission and Township Board processes. Although actions have been taken, I must ask, does this behavior suggest that those processes are merely formalities and the public voices no longer matter? This is how I feel as a resident. So there are plenty of other issues regarding the rezoning. So how can developer assume changing the commercial use to the multifamily residence is more beneficial for the CPE residents? I disagree. And, of course, the traffic and environmental reports, all those studies have been done by the persons and parties hired by the developer. So are they really reliable and valid? I'm not sure. So my area of expertise is sustainable community development. And projects like this really produce the aesthetic pollution and also doesn't care the long-term development of the whole community. So this project is incomparable with the character and safety of our neighborhood. It prioritizes the developer's interest over families, children, and the well-being of the residents. So development shouldn't take place at the cost of the current residents and our quality of life and safety. So look what happened to Dobie Road Project. I urge the Planning Committee and the Township to deny this project proposal, particularly the rezoning request ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Heng Hannah Nguyen, followed by Nara Paramezwaran.
Good evening. My name is Heng Heng Hannah Nguyen. I'm living in four eight five five Nassau Streets. And you know, like, my house, if you look into the map, you can see that the building will be just behind. If they're going to build just behind my house, so you know how concerned I am when I come here. I want to raise three points when I talk to you. The first one, I think, is the overall image of the town itself and also the neighborhood. Because, you know, like, if you go into this area, when we first come here, we heard about Okemos. It's always the dream town or city. We can call it a small city compared to other locations like Hartley's or Williamson. People always say highly about Okemos, right? And we're very proud to choose the house in this neighborhood. But then, if you build lots of high-density buildings in this neighborhood, basically, you'll damage the overall quality, high-quality and peaceful image of the neighborhood. So in the long run, it's going to hurt the entire community itself and also the image of our city or our town. So that is the first point I want to raise here. And I would like you to consider that one because every town in our neighborhood really look up to Okemos and look into how peaceful, how beautiful our town is. Then the second point I would like to raise here is that it's a security. So before I moved into Okemos area, I was living in Central Park Estate for about two and a half years. You can imagine that every month, we have to hear the fire alarm because that's very noisy. And also because there's so many people living in the apartment, they always have the problem. So every month, several times, we had to go out. And even during the nighttime, many times, at the time, my daughter was very small, in the bathroom, they had to, like, finish everything very quick and go out of the house. Now imagine that you have several buildings behind our neighborhood. Then for sure, in the future, you're going to hear lots of noises and also fire alarms, right? So that is another concern that I have to worry about in addition to the traffic and also the density of the building, right? And the last one, I think, we should raise about here is that the changing of the zone, right? So who knows that whether you have more buildings and you have more apartment would be better compared to the existing zone that related to the commercial? Because if you look into that area, you can see that that is an open space. Really beautiful. If you look into around the neighborhood, you can see that other areas are lots of apartment, a lot of houses. But that area is really much open. It's very much where the area where lots of people are going there.
Thank you, that's your time.
But now, if you have a density houses, it will disappear very soon.
Thank you.
So three important parts.
Thank you. Next up is Nara Paramezwaran, and then followed by Doug Hartman.
Well, thank you for allowing me to talk today. My name is Nara Paramezwaran. I live in fifteen twenty-nine Belvedere Avenue. I don't have anything new to add. It's things that my friends have already talked about. Obviously, I'm opposed to this development. But I want to underscore a couple of things. One is the traffic study. The traffics, in our developer front, said the traffic is going to be less than what the commercial traffic could be. But it still would be at least two thousand more traffic in terms of per day. And that is a lot for Central Park Drive. However, you direct the traffic from those apartments, they're all coming into Central Park Drive. And that is a lot of traffic. And we already, this is, it's starting to become very dense. And you're adding two thousand more traffics to that, to that density area. So thank you again. I want to underscore the traffic issue. And I'm glad that we have a community, sustainable community development expert in our midst. I hope that you all listen to her in terms of thinking about how you make your decisions.
Thank you. Next up is Doug Hartman, followed by Rupenda Varidi.
Hi, I'm Doug Hartman from four eight one eight Nassau Street in the neighborhood. My wife and family live there. I'd like to raise questions in two areas. The first is about quality of the management and the construction. While we can't observe the operation procedures and the quality of the construction, there are proxies available in the public domain. Earlier, the question was asked about the Better Business Bureau and the EPIQ. Those are widely available data, as well as Google and Yelp. While it's easy to go in and fix those by simply responding within a certain time period, the more substantive and important part is what's actually in those complaints and those issues. I think those speak as proxies to the quality of the operation and the construction to be done. Statements about unfixed appliances, cheap construction, neighbors living there for years, hearing their neighbors sneeze and cough next door, and unkept landscaping. Are these the kind of managers we want? The kind of construction we want in this situation? My second comment has to do with the master plan compliance. I asked you to consider how this fits in with other parts of master plans for the communities. If you look, for example, at the 2024 Pathway Master Plan, there's a proposed pathway to pass through this area heading east over to Vanetta. It's not represented in the plan and hasn't been part of the discussion. So I ask you to please consider whether this fits with other parts of master plans that are in the works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Rupenda Varidi, followed by Sarah Kovac.
Hi, my name is Rupenda Varidi. I'm a resident of Central Park Estates. I'm living at fifteen fifty-one Maiden Lane, Okemos. So today here, I have three main concerns. Of course, everybody's talking about traffic. And the number one problem I have is every left turn on Central Park is a nightmare. I know this traffic study is done, but when we get home and if you had to take any of these left turns, it is done at least ten, fifteen minutes waiting in line to turn the left. And the oncoming traffic never stops and don't even care who's turning left or, of course. But again, I've seen many misses in accidents, too. Number two, why do we need apartments here? If you look at anyapartment.com right now, it status says there are four hundred available apartments in Okemos alone in four-mile radius. And why three hundred more? Why can't, a lot of people are looking for more homes to buy and build their families here. Why not more, single-family homes here? Number three, when we bought the land in Central Park Estate building the home, we asked IDs that, what is your future use for the front acreage that you have? They said it's CS. And now, and that is very happy for us because there's not much coming in. But now it's changed to a residential or high-density. Is this like a bait and switch now? Are we players of pawns to fulfill those lots that are already built in homes? So we strongly oppose this development. All we need here is more single-family homes to spread our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Kovac, followed by Yidi Du.
Hello, my name is Sarah Kovac. I live at forty-eight forty-nine Nassau Way. And I've tried to, like, reflect upon, as a Planning Commission, like, what is within your purview? And I think we've heard a lot about traffic, which I also agree with that. And I would just ask that you do your due diligence in getting an independent traffic study done rather than one completed by the proposed developer. But my even greater concern is the impact to the environment and the wetlands that exist there and specifically the drainage. Making sure that, if anything should be built there, that it can still accommodate everything and still, I guess, accept all of that. Like, is there going to be, will the Drain Commissioner come in? Will they have a plan? I know when you look at how our house drains, it's straight out to the property line. Am I going to have a basement backup flood at some point in the future, which I've never had in the time that I've owned my house in fifteen years? So I really hope that that's not the case. And I just hope that, as you consider all of these things, that you'll really think about what's in the best interest of the residents and not just in economic development because that's not always in our best interest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Yidi Du, followed by Henry Kwak.
Good evening. My name's Yidi Du. I live in one five seven two Maiden Lane. I want to focus on the zoning issue. Why the high-density apartment should not be placed directly next to low-density single-family homes? So if you look at the map, it basically gonna put fourteen-unit-per-acre apartment complex right beside our neighborhood. That goes against one of the key principles of good urban planning: compatibility. Zoning should provide a smooth transition between land uses, not a abrupt shift that brings parking lot, tall buildings, and traffic right next to a quiet, very peaceful residential area. So before Okemos, I was living in Wickson, which is a small city but well-planned, near Novi. So if you look at the zoning map here, I mark the green one as the single-family with around one-quarter acres of land and the orange one as the high-density apartment, which around ten unit per acre, which is also not fourteen yet. So if you see this, they're not close to each other. They are zoning property. The apartment should be in the downtown area, not somewhere that all the single-family occupies. So if you look for, also looking for something different, I can give another example, which is Selim, a town right next to Annaber, the home of University of Michigan. So you can see the orange zone and the green zone are not close to each other. There are no roads shared by them. They are not, they are not, like, sorry, if you can see. Yeah. There's no road shared by the high-density apartment and low-density single-family homes. So I believe Meridian Township should follow the same principle. Approving this rezoning will create long-term issue with traffic, noise, privacy, and set a precedent for the poor land use transition. Township development should not, should not be like one-day thing. You should have a longer vision and keep the township sustainable. Keep the current CS zoning or limiting residential density to eight unit per acre would maintain the balance. I also have a small suggestion for the continental properties, looking for somewhere that is already planned as a high-density apartment, not for changing the zoning of our neighborhood. I respectfully urge the board to reject rezoning requests and protect the integrity of Meridian zoning map and community characters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Henry Kwak. And if I pronounced that wrong, I'm so sorry. And then followed by Diana Cavalier.
Hello, my name is Henry Kwak. Hopefully, you can hear me. I speak very low. I live at fifteen seventy-eight Maiden Lane. Former ZBA member as well as Economic Development member in this township. My family has lived here for over twenty-seven years, since I was a kid. And we own businesses here, both the Asia Muffet and Henry's Place, right across the street from where we live. Here tonight to give opposition for this project for many reasons, but a lot of my neighbors have spoken to those. But Meridian Township has truly been a special place to live. You know, I understand the need for growth. I'm deeply concerned for the consequences of adding three hundred units in the area that, you know, you have luxury homes in area. So it doesn't make any urban sense, any planning sense. And, you know, that's gonna bring, you know, they say, five hundred to eight hundred people in the area. And we don't know, that's just an approximate, how many people that's gonna come in. But, you know, that's three, four times more dense than what our neighborhood has as far as people. And that's gonna create that many more traffic congestions, that many more noise pollutions in the area. And especially, where are all the, you know, natural inhabitants? The deers, the rabbits, the, you know, where are they gonna go? You know, also, you know, the drainage, that's the main issue. You know, you get a high-density unit there. Where is all the water gonna flow? I mean, my basins flooded a couple of times because we're on the lower end, lower grade of all the neighborhoods. And, you know, that's an issue. I don't know how many neighbors in our neighborhood have issues of flooding. But, you know, we are in a low-plains area in this area. Let's see, in the past decade, you know, Okemos, Meridian Township has grown ten percent. You know, that's a pretty high rate for a town the size. And I mean, I feel like we need to decrease our rate of growth in this township. Or else we'll really have no quality of life for everybody because it's become so populated in this area. You know, I've driven down Belvedere, Columbus, Newman, multiple times, just go home from work 'cause you could hardly turn left. I mean, you already created road diet that's, that's created slower pace for turning.
Thank you. Next is Diana Cavalier, followed by Tarek Sessi.
Hi, I'm Diana Cavalier. I live at 1508 Belvedere Avenue. And I would like to speak to your point about the walkability. I am typically walking Central Park Drive with my dogs. And I can tell you that traffic is already very challenging, especially when you get to the area where you're going towards Culvers and there's a hidden driveway from another apartment complex. People are already whipping out of that driveway. Also, when you're trying to cross from that Thai Princess area, it's very challenging. It's a very busy corner. I think that cramming potentially 600 people into that small area is a recipe for disaster, not only because of traffic, but also potentially, you know, increases in crime. The more people you have concentrated in an area, the more of those things typically occur. I am curious as to, I know it was brought up that some apartment buildings are not even filled at this point and there's plenty available in the area. I'm wondering what will happen when potentially these units don't get rented, aren't full? Are they gonna drop those rental rates? And then you're gonna open it up to potentially, again, less desirable people living in the community. I have a daughter that goes to Oakhamus High School and I know that they're already challenged as far as the number of kids in the classrooms and the reduction in teachers. So yes, you may get more tax dollars, but then you're also adding more children to the mix. And I don't think that they can accommodate that. I feel like that makes the taxpayers' children suffer. We pay the taxes. We want our schools to be strong and we want a lower number of students to teachers. We already have a new neighborhood that has been put in, the Oakhamus Preserve. And we have not felt the full impact of that neighborhood because it is not yet full as far as traffic. I've already seen the bus stopping there to pick up children. I'm sure that's going to increase. And if you think about driving that stretch of road from Marsh to Grand River, I'm sure you probably traveled that. Right now, we have no traffic lights along there. A lot of people avoid Marsh because they can take Central Park and avoid all of the lights. You're definitely gonna have to put a light in, probably at Newman. But that stretch of road cannot accommodate, you went from four lanes to two lanes. It cannot accommodate that many people living in that area. So that's something else to consider. It would be very frustrating to travel that stretch of road. And then I'm also concerned about the impact on the green space. Again, I like to walk that stretch. And, thank you.
Next up is Tarek Sessi, followed by Nina Sessi. And again, I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. Please correct me.
Not a problem. It's been mispronounced way worse, so.
I have one like that too. Nobody gets mine right, so I get it.
Did anyone discuss traffic yet? Cause I'm not really sure. But, so.
Give us your name and your address first, if you don't mind.
Tarek Sessi, 4825 Nassau Street. So I wanna point out that we are not against access and we're not against development. But I just feel like this is a bit misguided in a way. Cause why not develop single family homes in this particular area? And then you have the corner of Grand River and Marsh where old Chicago's just sand dormant, nothing is there. The Verizon store next door, nothing. The downtown Oakhamus, nothing. With that said, cause I'm not gonna tell people what to do with their private property. What I will attest to though is my expertise as an intelligence analyst and my law enforcement background. Whenever you do get this high of concentration of people in a specific area that close to a residential area, like Diane mentioned, you are gonna notice an upstake in drunk driving, traffic crashes, breaking in entry, retail theft, just to name a few. Secondly, my other expertise in incident response and emergency management, we're boxed in and on three sides by train tracks. And how the roads are as they are now, the only thing keeping us safe, knock on wood, is just luck. So in case of a catastrophic event, if you add that level of complexity, you're not gonna have access to emergency services, just to name a few. So with that said, that's, that's my time. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you very much. Next we have Nina Sessi, followed by Vince Timonin.
Good evening, it's Nina Sessi. I'm 48, no worries. We, we're the family that has the names that are hard to pronounce.
Like I said, I get it.
So it's 4825 Nassau Street. I just wanna start by kinda telling our story. And I know I have three minutes, but we moved here in 2020 from East Lansing. We had built our home there. It was like an open area. And before you know it, we had all of these apartment complexes basically surrounding our neighborhood. We moved here because it was built for a family. They have a preserve, we can walk, we felt safe. When we lived in East Lansing, as much as they were marketed as for young professionals, it's college students. We have MSU right up the street. And so you have multiple folks that are moving together in one unit. Or they have specials because again, they're not able to make sure that they have their occupancy rates up. And so it's not even so much the college students, it's the weekend when their friends come in town. It's game night. And so what we found is that we had break-ins in our vehicles. We had a lot of, I think there was a gunshot in a parking lot not too far away. So there's a lot of things that occur because there's so many people concentrated together. Now, I'm not saying all rental units, there's gonna be nefarious activity. But again, I think we need to be clear in what we do and how we preserve the integrity of a community. When we moved here, again, we looked at the composition. We looked at, you know, who our neighbors were. We got to know our neighbors. We looked at again, how we can become part of the community. In the last year, we're seeing all of that kind of being broken down. I'm seeing all of these rental units, again, those could have been condos. We're having rental units come up, meaning we're having transient people come in that are not intending to be permanent residents of the community. So now I went from walking and riding my bike with my, my kid to we're walking down the street and I'm having people approach me and say, maybe not the kindest things. So again, I think that we had, there's a time and a space. And I think right now, just hearing what the developers said about their intention and that they understand the community, I don't think that's clear. I think I have more questions after their presentation. It sounds like you all did as well. If anything, at the very most, approving this right away isn't a smart move. I think that we need to take some time and have independent studies for traffic. We need to look at crime. We need to look at the integrity of the community in terms of the water infrastructure, drainage. There's a number of things that haven't been assessed and we can't leave it up to a developer, who by the way, has like a one point rating on Google to give us that information. So I just wanna make sure that you have all that information. I know that members of the community have shared all of that and I'm grateful. Again, this shows how Oakhamus is a community and I hope that you guys allow us to preserve that.
Thank you. Next up is Vince Timonin, followed by Praveen Raparti.
I live in Central Park Estates too. And.
Can you give us your name, sir, just for?
Yeah, Vince Timonin.
Thank you.
Yeah, my handwriting's not as good as my name, I think. The, I'm here to talk about the conclusions of the developer in, in the assurances that we got and communications to us. The traffic impact study is at odds with the numbers. It says that the impact is acceptable for the traffic, but it's at odds with the numbers. With a net increase of approximately 2,000 outbound trips generated by the 312 unit complex, Central Park Drive simply can't absorb such an increase by an estimated 600 onsite vehicles making multiple daily trips. The complex is proposed to be built around a 90 degree curve with limited advanced visibility on Central Park Drive, which is already congested, 35 mile per hour narrow road. Driving's already treacherous. My own family was in an auto accident at the bend in that road with another vehicle colliding into ours. And that was before the new influx of traffic from the very large Grand Reserve condo complex just south of us. It's unconscionable to go forward with this big apartment complex in the worst possible location. We also have a multitude of traffic from the mall and the vast number of businesses located in this vicinity generating traffic. If the commission approves this plan, it will be jeopardizing the health, safety and welfare, not only of the residents of Central Park Estates, but of all of Oakhamus and the multitude of shoppers who visit from elsewhere to pass through Central Park, um, Central Park Drive daily. Also, there's no way for pedestrians to safely cross Central Park Drive already. And that's gonna be much worse after this development comes in. The developer claims that less than 7% of the wetlands will be impacted. But the site map shows some of the 11 sprawling apartment buildings and parking lots sitting upon wetlands, which will be replaced with geometrically shaped unnatural detention pools, which are a poor substitute for the natural habitat which will be destroyed in the building process, along with much of the wildlife in it. As a former legislative aide for the Chair of the Michigan House of Representatives Conservation and Environment Committee, I have some expertise in this matter. We've also heard reports of flooding of neighboring residents' basements in Meridian Township when similar developments have been built next door. I even called Dingham County Drain Commission, talked to them about it, and they reported the same thing to me. It's also incorrect to claim that wildlife will not be disturbed when wildlife and its habitat will be, will be replaced buried under by 312 apartments and, and by their parking lots. The proposal is, is very incompatible to the existing uses, placing those apartments in close proximity to single family luxury homes within a stone's throw of $600,000 houses.
Thank you. Next up is Praveen Raparti, followed by Wayne Hutchison.
Yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Praveen Raparti. I live in 1565 Belvedere Avenue, Oakhamus. Before me, a lot of my neighbors spoke about a lot of things I don't want to repeat. And so hope you understand the importance of the, what is our request. We want to live our greener life because our neighborhood is pretty wonderful neighborhood, which is exist between the trees. So we want to stay like that. And please consider all our requests, what everybody told about. And if ID and other builders, they want to do, they can extend few more, similarly our single family home residents, so that they won't lose their property. But we don't want, I want to oppose this multi apartments because of so many reasons which we, all our neighbor expressed. So my sincere request to all the board members is, please think about it and please do the justice to all the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Wayne Hutchison, followed by Binod.
Hi, everybody. Wayne Hutchison, I live at 4831 Nassau Street. And my family's lived in the Central Park neighborhood for more than 11 years. We moved here because of the balance this area offers. Close to town, yet still surrounded by trees, wildlife and quiet streets designed for moderate, multi-residential use. I'm asking the planning commission to deny the proposed amendment for the authentic Oakhamus development behind Nassau. While the property is already zoned for multi-residential use, the proposal pushes that zoning to its outer limits and strains the infrastructure, environment and character of our community. My neighbors have talked a lot about the traffic and infrastructure pieces, so I won't continue to say anything other about those pieces than I agree with them. Adding more than 312 apartment units will generate hundreds of additional vehicle trips every day, compounding congestion, increasing noise and making it harder for pedestrians, cyclists and school buses to travel safely. These roads were not built to absorb that kind of an influx of growth. And there are no plans to expand or improve them or have additional traffic lights for those resources. Equally concerning is the loss of natural habitat and the fragmentation of the wetland system that runs through this site. Every day we see foxes, possums, raccoons, wild turkeys, rabbits, deer and a wide variety of birds that depend on these woods and wetlands, a continuous corridor. Once those green buffers are gone, paved over or walled in by dense housing, the habitat disappears and with it, the ecological benefits that protect all of us. Wetlands absorb stormwater, filter runoff and prevent flooding. When they are hemmed in by concrete and parking lots, their protection fails, increasing flooding risks to nearby homes. Meridian Township's master plan emphasizes environmental stewardship, balanced growth and neighborhood compatibility. This proposal sacrifices those principles in favor of maximum density and short-term profit. Once the tree line and wetland buffer are gone, they cannot be replaced. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the planning committee to uphold the intent of the existing RC zoning, moderate, environmentally sensitive development, and to reject amendments that would exceed those limits. Our infrastructure, environment and community character all depend on it. Finally, calling this development a transitional residential use is misleading. A true transitional zone should create a gentle step down between high intensity commercial areas and established, single family neighborhoods through lower density housing, preserved green buffers and compatible scale. This proposal does the opposite. It maximizes density, removes much of the natural buffer and introduces apartment level traffic and lighting immediately adjacent to homes. Meridian's own master plan defines traditional housing as low intensity, multifamily or attached units such as townhomes or duplexes, not large apartment complexes with hundreds of residents. Approving this project under the label of transitional would ignore the intent of both the zoning district and the community plan. Finally, thank you for your time and for protecting the balance that makes this part of Oakhamus a special place to live.
Thank you. Next up is Binod, followed by Supratik Rai Amachi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Binod. I'm from 1611 Columbus Avenue. So I'm here talking about the damage which is already done. I'm talking about the south of the Columbus Avenue, which I believe is the wetland. That's what I got from the Michigan website. So my concern regarding recent clearing activities which happened in the Central Park State, the south of Columbus Avenue, adjacent to the homeowner's property where I live. It started exactly from the border of my house property. It appeared that work started that involved the disturbance and removal of wetland areas. I personally called township to make them aware. And I saw the urgency so that they can come and check whether this is authorized or not. The township officer came and they stopped the work. In the meantime, a chunk of wetland areas was already cleaned up and it remains as is till today. Given the environmental sensitivity and legal protections often associated with the wetland, I respectfully request the township review the unauthorized activity to determine future actions. In addition, I urge the township to take appropriate, appropriate action to ensure the restoration of the impacted wetland. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And this is the last sheet I have, so if anybody else plans to speak and has not given a sheet, please turn it in right away. But this is Supratik Rai Amachi. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. My name is Supratik Rai Amachi. I live in 1612 Columbus Avenue, the first house in the neighborhood as you walking through the Columbus Avenue. I didn't have any plans to come today, cause I've decided to move on. I'm looking for a new house already. But I started the uproar, as most of you know about this, when this was proposed and planned. I came here 14 years ago, bought the first house, the model house on Columbus Avenue. But I didn't buy to face within 45 feet or 100 feet, whatever that is, the back of a rental unit. But I came here to support my community and the sanctuary, we call it Central Park Estates. At this point, I'm disgusted. When whoever decided to come close to my property, right by my property line, where a Binod house is right in front of me and caught the tall grass, that was enough for me, just to let you know. Home pricing for these luxury homes are from half a million to $750,000 as of now. And then bringing these 312 rental units right by the back of the property line, I don't know how that's right. 130 units in Oakhamus Preserve has already been built right on that narrow corridor between Marsh and Grand River. And that has already added to the traffic. As I come out of my Central Park Drive, I find it hard to make a turn. And then add 312 units between the narrow corridor, tell me how it's right. If Continental wants to build amazing property and, you know, uplift our community, they can go ahead by the vacant lot between Hamilton and Oakhamus that has. can go ahead and buy their vacant lot between Hamilton and Okemos that has been vacant for 15 years. I've been here, and nothing has been built. So, they can do that there. The way we build communities is, if IDI has enough money, they can donate this land and make it into a nice conservatory, a preserve. I can donate myself to, you know, put a statue there for IDI, if that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment. So, this is, just remind me, Mr. Shortky, this is where we close the public hearing, right?
Correct.
Close the public hearing at 8:56. If commissioners have questions for staff, and just a reminder that we are not expecting staff to answer these questions necessarily today, probably not. We'll be giving them questions to list and bring back to us at a future meeting. With that said, Commissioner McConnell.
Sure. We heard Director Schmidt during the public comment that, and we've seen in our written public comment, that some activities seem to have been undertaken on some of these parcels, and a suggestion that complaint about those activities resulted in some, in the township causing a cessation of those activities. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can actually speak to this pretty clearly. So, it's two separate issues, actually. First and foremost, Continental did have permission to be on-site to do limited activities for soil borings. That's consistent with any project anywhere in the township. What also happened, unfortunately, in the same day, was some clearing was done by the owner of the property of areas along the edge of the road, and they certainly went further than I think anyone anticipated. We did issue a stop work and issued a ticket for a violation of land-clearing ordinance. At this time, we do not believe, in fact, we're fairly certain, given that we have a recent delineation, that there were no wetlands impacted. But we will be following up on that issue post-decision on this project, because we have addressed it accordingly, and it's in the administrative process now to be addressed further, once we have an answer as to where it's going. Thank you.
Can you give us a timeline for the solution?
No, I'm sorry. This is for the board members only, to talk to Director Schmidt. Any other questions?
Just generally around this specific topic.
Generally.
I have a question, Director Schmidt, about the 30 acres. So, is this, is this all considered one parcel, or is it separate parcels?
It's three separate parcels, because it's bisected by a road. As a general rule, you can't have a parcel jump a road.
Okay. And does the unit-per-acre requirement, does that go across the whole 30 acres, or would that be different based on the road separation?
It's across the project. That would be consistent with what we do in any other project that has multiple properties being conglomerated into one development parcel.
Okay. So, the, like, the top portion, though, is, wouldn't be, let's say, 20 units per acre versus the bottom one, or the middle one, which would be, let's say, eight? That wouldn't factor into a calculation like this?
No, I mean, that's how, off the top of my head, that's similar to Nob Hill. I think the existing Central Park Apartments is split into two or three parcels, if I remember correctly. So, that's pretty standard, is the overall property is X.
Okay.
That, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Ronback.
Mr. Schmidt, I want to just be really sharp on the edict from the board, because the board has kicked this to the Planning Commission for resolution of specific questions, basically, right?
Yeah, so the board has referred the matter to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, comments, review on the land use question that's in front of you.
Okay. And I guess I've been parsing through the documents, and I may have lost it, like, the specific land use question is the specific rezoning to this, to the residential from this CS, correct?
So, it's the RD NCS to RC.
To RC?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're addressing the specific question, because I was parsing through staff documents.
Correct.
No question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just looking at this map. Here at the Times Square-Madison Avenue corner, and also, if you go along Madison Avenue, are those two, like, wetlands?
So, we will, go ahead, but we have a delineation. We'll provide a copy of that to you at our next meeting. Wetlands kind of go throughout. There's a few different areas.
Because I'm wondering, it will, well, maybe not, but, yeah, I know some, I'm just wondering if there will be some type of disturbance of those areas when, you know, apartments are built, you know?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get you guys a copy of all the wetland details we have as well.
Okay.
So, that'll be part of what you bring in. I have a question, following up on what Commissioner Brooks asked. That it appeared in the proposal that we saw that the higher-density, taller buildings were going to be concentrated more in that area that's the north side, the north parcel with the lower density. If we were to recommend conditions for the board to consider, would one of those things, could we say that we want, I know the overall property density is one thing, or dwelling units per acre is one thing, but could we say that we would like this parcel to be this and this parcel to be that? Or does it have to be an average across the whole? I don't want to put a condition that we can't impose or that they couldn't impose.
No, I mean, I think certainly if the request is to recommend something along the lines of sort of what's being proposed, that we want to focus the taller buildings to the north and the shorter buildings to the south, that's certainly a reasonable recommendation to the board.
And it appears that that's already what's being proposed, but if something like that might put the adjacent community members at ease, that what's, not encroaching, but what is in the approach to their neighborhood is a little bit less dense, that may...
It'll certainly tighten it up.
It gets some of that transition, perhaps. So, that would be something, I guess, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask you to share options about how we might word something like that in a way that would be appropriate, if that's the desire of others.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, Commissioner McConnell, would you have something, or?
Not yet.
Okay.
I guess I would appreciate staff's suggestions for how we might craft conditions related to walkability. It's a little tricky for us, since we don't own the roads or control the roads. We defer to the county road department. But nevertheless, we want to use our ability to shape these kinds of developments in the ways that we would like to see them shaped. And I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know what the appropriate solution is to get people from one side of Central Park, for example, to the other safely. There is, there are marked crosswalks, so there are facilities, and I'm pretty sure that those facilities probably meet whatever minimum guidelines exist for crossings at such places. So, I guess what I'm wondering is, what are our options as a planning commission to encourage or require that the applicant explore possible alternatives in collaboration with the road department, and that they bring to us something that, an appropriate standard that they believe they should build to, and how they would intend to build to that standard, whether it's a state or a federal or some other guideline that would show us what might happen. And I'm not expecting an answer to that tonight, but I would love to see it next time we get this.
Yes, sir.
I just have a quick logistics question, since this is so different from what we usually see.
Yes, ma'am.
The next, like, what will be the process and how will we be involved moving forward? Like, tonight, is it mostly discussion, or will we have more opportunities to discuss? I just, I'm trying to get a sense of that.
So, certainly, our hope, as with any project, is that we get as much feedback tonight, so we can follow up and put you guys in a position where you can refer it back to the board, if you'd like. If additional items come up at the next meeting, based on our responses, obviously, we would want to make sure that we get the planning commission where they want to be. Ultimately, you know, this is, as long as we are adequately analyzing and advancing things in a timely fashion, I don't want to put any sort of outward timeframe on things. But I will say that the planning commission's normal process is, get all our discussion out, make a decision. Right? That's, so, to the extent that we follow our normal process as much as we can, it's probably a good idea.
Thank you. So, good idea to raise questions now. Would we have opportunity to ask you additional questions at some point between now and our next meeting? We don't want to box you into things, but if we think of something when we go home, we can...
Absolutely. You're always willing, allowed to email me.
Got it. And I think, just to clarify, I think we aren't planning on straw poll voting and voting on anything at our next meeting. That's not my intent. I think we're going to come back and hear the answers to our questions, have some more discussion at our next meeting, and then kind of take it from there, but not at a point where we're going to discuss forever. But at some point, we want to get to a point of giving the board our collective feedback and letting them make the decision. Our collective feedback. Go ahead, Commissioner. I'm sorry, then, Commissioner Ronback, I saw you too. But go ahead, Commissioner Curtis.
I'm just, I'm going to be as candid as I can. In terms of, I know what we're, I guess, tasked with doing, actually do, but how does it fit with our land, our land use? And maybe that's what we have to decide. I mean, because it, we do have, you know, these group of homes, the Central Park Estates, and there's a proposal to put, you know, these apartments right in front, where you have all the stores, and there is a lot of traffic in Central Park, or potentially could create a lot of traffic in Central Park, Central Park Drive. So, you know, I want to do my due diligence and make sure that we look at this in a very surgical manner. It's almost like we almost have to sort of predict the future, but rely on numbers to do that. But I know we came up with this land use, what do you call it?
Future land use map?
Yes. And I just want to see what, I mean, how does that relate to what is proposed here?
And relate to the judgment that I think affects what's in the future land use map for this particular property, making it a little bit unique.
Yeah. Because a lot of things, and I'll say this last thing, and I'll be quiet, but a lot of these, like, like this natural land, I mean, part of the land, excuse me, land use map, we saw a lot of, what do you call it, like, land preservation. You know, does that fall, I understand this is owned by an owner, I get all of that, but, you know, just, how does that all mix in together? Because I want to make sure that we are following kind of the blueprint that we established.
Absolutely.
And if I could piggyback on that, too, I'm staring at the future land use map right now, and I always feel a little bit puzzled by it, because the, it doesn't, some of the categories, I know that they're not supposed to line right up with the zoning code, but like, what is transitional? I know what transitional residential is, but if someone could maybe explain it from the township perspective, I would appreciate that, too. And, yeah, I would love to have further discussion about how this would fit in with the future land use map.
Commissioner Ronback, you have...
I think my original question actually was the question Commissioner Snyder asked on just the timeframe of, because this does seem really unique in all aspects. And that goes to my original question about if the 92 order is still considered in full force and a factor of the settlement, because it's like, is this an arms-length agreement between the board and the developer and the owners? Because there could be stipulations that the sides don't like, there could be some that make sense, and you want to, if this is the one time, you want to get it right. And I think taking time will be quite appropriate there, but I understand there's a balance between the two. So, I don't know. It's terribly, it's really interesting. It's, and the impacts are hard to measure in one meeting or even two, or however many it's going to be.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on the 30 acres, or, yeah, the 30 acres and the units-per-acre. So, I think my, I think that, I mean, I really appreciate the residents and everybody else coming out here to speak. I always appreciate it, even, and try and listen to everyone. The thing that I'm thinking about is, there's already multiple roads here in this whole development. And so, we are supposed to, if we are supposed to treat the units-per-acre across the whole development, the southern one's not getting any, is a separate thing. It's almost like a park off to itself. And so, I'm wondering what the units-per-acre allowable are within, like, can we treat each of these parcels separately? What would that do to these building sizes that would be allowable within the zone request that's being made, is one question. Then also, that has probably parking implications, because the 569 that were in that document, if that's for the whole development, then the middle parcel, nobody's going to park in the middle parcel to go up to the one on the top, which is going to have more parking demands, though, because there's more dense housing up there. So, it's like this, I don't, that the parking also is a potential issue, because then it creates more runoff, and the people's points about water and erosion. The third, so I'd appreciate any kind of perception in that, those two, two topics.
Understood.
And the third item is related to the traffic. I just want to say this. I went to a listening session with the township, just to listen to other comments from people locally, and I learned more things there. And one was that if you have concerns about local roads, like county roads, it's a good thing to go talk to the road commission at the county level, which is really what dictates lots of these things. So, I learned that myself. So, but anyways, related to that topic, the Central Park Drive is right here, and so this is where these three parcels sit. And I'm wondering if there are alternative structures that we can recommend, and I'm just thinking out loud here, it's just an idea, but like, is a traffic circle something that would both slow traffic but also allow for the movement of traffic? We have one right there off of Marsh in the Village of Okemos, which I don't ever get stopped at, and it's a fairly movable place. And I also think that would help with the walkability aspect, and there could be bike compatibility that was built into this. The other comment related to the traffic is, I'm, I don't know what this means exactly, but I am concerned that the, that, thinking towards the future, this property is within the urban service boundary. So, it's very possible that a larger development could go in to the west of Central Park Drive, right in that spot, and could increase the traffic on Central Park Drive. There's lots of things that could probably happen in this space. And I'd, I just like, I don't know what this would look like, but is it possible not to have the access points on Central Park Drive? Because then, at least... Because then that leads to more people going in and off that road. And if there were traffic circles on Columbus and Belvedere, then you wouldn't want two entry points in the middle of, that was added in between those. So these are just explorative ideas in terms of how do we use this land in a way that can serve everyone involved in some capacity. Those are the ones that I have at the moment.
You got that?
Got it.
Oh, I have one more, actually. I'm sorry. So in the document, I can't remember exactly what page it was, there was a mention of 24,300 square feet. Can't remember what page it's on, but it was specifically mentioned because they didn't, the, I think the applicant didn't want to trigger a special use permit. But then, I thought that the total square foot for the whole development was far above our 25,000 special use permit requirement. And so it seems odd to me that we would show 10 units per acre for the 30, but then the special use permit's not triggered for the whole development because it's under that value in certain places.
It's, it's, our SUP requirement is for some of the buildings that were 25,000, so we, we'll explain that a little better.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm done. And thank you for your time putting this together and answering our questions.
That's what we're here for.
Any other questions?
Historically, sorry, historically, when was maybe the last time that roughly 30 acres was rezoned? I mean, seems like a lot of acres of land. I don't know that you know that off the top of your head.
I was trying. I was doing some quick math. I can't come up with a.
A significant number.
Um, we'll come up with some comparisons for you.
Thank you.
I have questions, I just can't articulate them. It's getting late.
Understood.
Yeah, I guess, the thing that we always struggle with, and I think it comes down to the question that we're being asked, is that it is currently owned by a private developer, this land is, and it's zoned for a mix of commercial and residential, and we're being asked to rezone it to residential, multifamily residential with a little bit higher density. But I think about, you know, you kind of talk about use by right and the things that could be done there, and, and it's always hard, it's hard for me, it's hard for everybody, when you see beautiful undeveloped land to say, oh, I don't want to lose this because we have animals living here. But, but there are things that the developer could do, provided they followed wetland laws and things like that, without any approval from anyone, you know, in, in certain areas. And so I think that's really the question that we're being asked to think about, is, is this the right thing here? And so if this is going to be transitional housing, I mean, because initially, even the neighborhood that's there wasn't there, it was undeveloped, and we had to, not we, but the township had to make an exception to allow that neighborhood to be built, and I'm sure there were people at the time who were concerned, you know, and about the loss of the trees and, and the environment then, too. And, and then in a, in a community like ours where we still do have a lot of nice areas, that's always a struggle when you see infill start to come in. But I think what we have to think about and remind ourselves is, what is the right thing? What is going to help preserve the benefits that are in the neighborhood for the neighbors and also allow the person that owns the property to use it in the way that they have a legal right to do that, that balances those two needs? And so I, that's not really a question for you, but I guess I'm asking, help us, if there are other places in the township where you've seen neighborhoods adjacent to things that do have, like, a commercial property, and, and there's successful transitions, or there's places where this has been done well? Because I, what I'd hate to do is say, oh, this, I'm concerned about this, and then have something come in that's even less, considered less congruous, but it is legal. You know, so I, I think we're trying to think of ways, if, if this goes forward, to build in conditions that help people feel comfortable with it and preserve the quality of what they're trying to do there, but also allow the property owner to do what they're legally allowed to do on their property.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, anything that you can share with us that helps us see options or good examples of where this has been done and other places where there are similar, I know this is a very unique piece of property, and it's going to be hard to do that, but, you know, or what could be if it was developed as it is currently zoned, like, what, what the other options might be, might be helpful. Yeah. And I really like what Commissioner McConnell said about, you know, options for conditions that might maintain both safety for pedestrians and, and drivers in cars or, or people in other modes of transportation in what is already a busy area. Anything, you know, pathways or things that we might be allowed to suggest or consider, or that in conversations with the developer, they might be willing to, to look at also, be helpful. Go ahead, Commissioner McConnell.
Thanks. I have a small number of points. I don't think they're really questions for staff as much as our comments for us as a commission and the community at large. Is now a good time for that?
Go ahead, yes.
Can I ask one last question? I apologize. Mixed-use MUPDs, like, does that, is that something that fits into this conversation?
It does not.
Okay.
Just from the pure technical aspect of the fact that the CS zoning essentially predates the modern MUPD ordinance, that would be complicated at best.
Okay. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions before Commissioner McConnell serves thoughts, considerations? Okay, go ahead.
All right. The first one is to echo some thoughts from Commissioner Brooks about, I really appreciate civic engagement and folks spending an evening of their time to come out and let us know what they're thinking. And meetings like this, for me, demonstrate the principle of what in my field is called participatory governance, civic engagement, and that's always wonderful to see as long as it's civil. And not as much during the oral public comments this evening, but in some of the written comments we saw, I was disappointed to see some vulgarity, which I believe has no place in this kind of conversation. I saw insinuation of corruption, which again, I think is a big sword to wield, and I hope people do it very carefully. Moreover, I continue to hear a sentiment in our community about the sorts of folks who rent and the sorts of folks who own. And when I hear terms like transient population, it feels pejorative to me. When I hear about less desirable people, it very much concerns me. When I hear about nefarious activities and crime rates, it makes me wonder if there are data behind that, or is that a fear that comes from somewhere else? So I hope we can all be civil and constructive and open-minded in our considerations. From the overall sort of abstract land use question, in my mind, if there were not a single-family development there, and someone was saying, I have a commercially zoned property, and I'd like to put a whole bunch of apartment buildings to try to save that mall over there, I think it would be a no-brainer for us. I think we'd say, heck yeah, we need more customers for these businesses, we want the mall, or whatever it turns into, to survive. And it gets complicated because of the history of the site, but my understanding of the land use question is, does this fit with what we're trying to accomplish in terms of a mix of residential and, and commercial? And that's why, to me, it feels like the sorts of infill development that I would like to see. And lastly, on the issue of changing the current character of the land, I took a few moments earlier today to look back at some historical aerial photography that I've gotten from the archive at MSU, and in 1938, I've said this before, I'll belabor it, but nine tenths of this property was being row-cropped, and there wasn't a tree to be found. Up above Belvedere, that little wetland was forested at that point, I believe it's probably the deepest and most difficult to farm wetland, but everything else on that property was under row crops, and all the deer that lived there came after the land was abandoned from agriculture in anticipation of development. So it may be providing habitat, it certainly is providing habitat, we've heard that evidence, there's possum, there's raccoons, and there's deer. Last week was the first time one of my immediate family members had the pleasure of Michigan driving and reducing the deer population by one. And in that instance, we were fortunate, that car went over the animal and the animal not through the car. So I take, I want to put in perspective how we see a certain piece of property. If I buy my house and I've got a vacant field behind it, that's great, but I got to know, you know, somebody, somebody that owns that and has the right to do something with it, and what is it that we'd like to see? So those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have thoughts or considerations?
We've got our homework. We will, and obviously, as I mentioned, if anybody thinks of something as they're lying awake tonight thinking about planning, please email me. We will follow up.
Every night.
I'm currently reading about Typhoid Mary, so.
Sounds like a very interesting.
So, very misunderstood woman. Very truly, very truly. But please, email me if you have any questions. Staff will follow up in writing. I've got three pages worth of stuff, and we'll circle back at our next meeting.
All right, thank you. And thank you to everybody who came tonight. I really appreciate your, your time and your input. We will be here in a couple weeks. So that gets us to item nine, other business. We don't have any. Item 10A is township board update, if you have one.
You know, I could say, for the first time, I think, in my entire time at Marion Township, I didn't have to go to the last board meeting. So they adopted the budget, and we have a new treasurer coming onboard later this week, but I was not there to see either of those things. And so I will, we will get to details on the new treasurer and the budget, which should be posted by now. The long and the short of it is, there's still a lot of unknowns, given that the state just hit us with about a 7% cut, and we just still do not have healthcare numbers, you know, that's, it's not pretty anywhere this year on the healthcare side.
No. Thank you. That's great news. Liaison reports, do any board members have, which members have reports from? Okay, project updates. Anything to share? Okay, thank you. We have another opportunity for public remarks at this point, if anybody would like to speak. Seeing none, we are to Commissioner comments.
One for me.
Go ahead, Commissioner Roback.
Just thanking Commissioner Schmidt, or, I'm sorry, Director Schmidt for clarifying the record on my non-conflict. It is important to have clean records, and for that, I put on the record that I thank Director Schmidt for clearing it up for me and counsel, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody's seconded. We're going to give it to Commissioner McCutcheon, but, but everyone, really. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 9:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sheriff Schubert.